Hello, everyone, and thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. I would now like to call the October 28th, 2025 Longmont City Council Regular Session to Order. The livestream of this meeting can be viewed at the city's YouTube channel or at longmontspublicmedia.org/watch or on Comcast Channels 8 and 880. May we have a roll call, please, Don?
Absolutely. Mayor Peck.
Here.
Councilmember Christ.
Present.
Mayor Protemi Doggelferring.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Councilmember Popkin.
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Yes.
Mayor Yuvakorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder to the public, in accordance with the council's rules of procedure, the rules for providing public comment are as follows. Only Longmont residents and employees of the city of Longmont may speak during the first call public invited to be heard, and you must provide your address on the sign sheet before the meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Anyone may speak on second reading or public hearing item, and you're asked to add your name to the speaker list for the specific item before the meeting. Anyone may speak during final call public invited to be heard, and members of the audience are/shall refrain from disruptive vulgar or abusive language, applause, heckling, or other actions that interfere with the orderly function of the council. May I have a motion for/to approve the October 14th minutes?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor McCoy, seconded by Mayor Protem Hidogelferring. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that carries unanimously. Are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
I have no revisions, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any motions to direct the city manager to add agenda items to future agendas? Seeing none, I do have a motion. It's not a motion to direct, but because of our fishbowl minimum wage conversation with our local businesses, I move that we, as this council, do not increase the minimum wage in Longmont.
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilor Christ. Is there any discussion?
Do not raise the minimum wage.
We pause on making the decision. At this time.
At this time, yeah.
Okay. Do you want to amend that, or?
So if I recall correctly, the discussion was that we were going to pause any action at this time.
Okay.
Considering, yeah, new council would be taking it over, so.
Okay. And that amendment's okay with Councilor Christ? So seeing Councilor Popkin.
Yeah, just so I know what I'm voting on. We're voting to pause a discussion on something that technically hasn't been a policy that we have opened in some way. I'm just curious like what the process is here at that.
This council is not going to take action.
Okay.
On minimum wage.
Okay. That's.
We would allow the next council.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you. Okay.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Mayor, on your screens, can you see the the motion? Have I captured that accurately?
Yes. So the motion is to pause taking any action on minimum wage in Longmont as this council. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now at the city manager's report.
Mayor, council, I do have a quick report. It's really an update on schedule over the coming month. So we have quite a few changes in meeting dates that I wanted to remind you of. So on Monday, November 3rd, we're, that's going to be the council meeting date instead of Tuesday, November 4th, because that's Election Day.
Okay.
Monday, November 10th is the LHA Board of Commissioners meeting, because Tuesday, November 11th is Veterans Day. Tuesday, November 18th is normal. November 25th is canceled for the Thanksgiving holiday. And then Tuesday, December 2nd, is a reception at 6:00 PM in the Civic Center area for outgoing council members. The organizational meeting starts at 7:30 PM by charter, and it will be followed by regular session. So all of those things will be, they should be in your calendar now. We just wanted to provide you an update before we get into November.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. I don't see that we have any special reports or presentations. Is that correct? Moving on, we are at first call public invited to be heard, and we have quite a few people. It looks like 40 have signed up. If you do not live in Longmont, you need to wait until the very last public invited to be heard to speak. So I'll give your address when you come up, and the first one is J.D. Glitz.
Mayor, that's the second sheet?
Is it?
Is that the second sheet? Oh, the other sheet is number one.
J.D., I'm sorry.
Sit down.
Nice to see you, though. Okay. The first one is Catherine Connor.
All right. She might have already been on.
No, it should turn right. Is it the upper left-hand corner?
There we go. Well, that's not a great start. Let's see how much we can get into three minutes here. My name is Catherine Connor, 2727 Nelson Road. I am the manager and chief CFI over at Aerosphere, the flight school on the field at Longmont. I would like to start about just kind of talking about, we are stewards of the airport over at Aerosphere. Not only do we obviously provide jobs to local community, spend money both in town at the airport, for instance, you know, $12,000 to $13,000 a month in fuel, but that fuel is unleaded. We've converted over our trainer aircrafts to take unleaded fuel, and we've been leaders on the field in that. We are good stewards of the airport. The noise abatement procedures hang on a movie-sized poster in our hangar. We are the people who attend the noise abatement meetings with other local flight schools in the northern Colorado region, including Broomfield, and so we are who are representing you there. We are teaching your future United pilots over here, and the pattern that we teach is not only noise compliant, but it's safe. To give you an idea, landing fees on the low end, we'd be looking at $7.09, according to airport advisory meeting that I sat in on last week. And our lessons, we're a mom-and-pop flight school. We're a Part 61. It means we're a small business, that we are offering options other than college to kids who are looking for a great career in the aviation industry, and our lessons run about $250. An average checkride is three landings, so on the low end, you're looking at an additional $20 upwards of 30, 35, and that's instantly a 10% to 15% increase on each lesson cost. It's not sustainable for us. It's not sustainable for our students. The owner has authorized me to say, we would have to pack up and leave Longmont if this was to go through. We are the main flight school on the field. We're the stewards of your airport, and we could not sustain the impact of landing fees. Let's talk money when it comes to budget with all of this. I tried to find a way to get you guys the spreadsheet that I have made based on Vector's current client list. My sources for this are Vector, the company that is hands-down the biggest player in the game when it comes to landing fees. They have their client list as public. From there, I pulled their client list, went to each individual airport's website to get these numbers. You are looking, and mind you, Vector has been in business 20 years. They're not brand-new. This isn't new technology. They've been around. If there's other guys in the game, I struggle to find them. This is kind of our main player. I suspect it's who you're looking at. They only have, they have 108 clients, but that number, oh, no. There's 5,100 airports that are public use.
Thank you, Catherine. Erin Warner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and staff. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Erin Warner. I live at 613 Independence Drive here in Longmont. I am a flight instructor at Aerosphere at the Vance Brand Airport. The Longmont Airport has been around since October of 1945, and today marks its 80th birthday. It was October 28th in 1945. On a daily basis, I enjoy working with people from all walks of life, who love the airport and what it brings to Longmont, whether it's the students who are studying to one day work in aviation professionally, the elderly gentlemen who get to impart their wisdom onto the next generation of pilots over coffee, or the families with little kids who get so excited to see the skydivers jump while enjoying the flight deck rail. The Longmont Airport has proven that it has a little something for everyone. In the past, there have been several attempts for the much-needed improvement of the airport. There were, there was talk of improving the FBO, allowing for much-needed hangar space, or even building a terminal, all of which would improve the airport's viability and self-sufficiency, all of which were shut down by the city. Now we are facing a situation regarding landing fees, an idea that in the past has categorically proven to hurt the airport community and drastically decrease revenue instead of improving it. Imagine driving to Costco to fill up on groceries for the week. After getting to peruse the aisles, enjoy the cafe, and head out with more than you were intending to buy, you receive a bill in the mail charging you for your usage of Highway 119, something you thought your taxes and vehicle registration were supposed to cover. Landing fees at an airport are no different. On top of that, the fees would target the individuals in the community who are less able to afford them. My students need, on average, to land five times per lesson, as opposed to the transient gent, which only lands about once. During my training, I landed just shy of 500 times to become proficient enough to teach them. If landing fees were involved, that would have made my goals far less attainable. Landing fees also would threaten many of the jobs for Longmont citizens. Many people, including myself, have moved to Longmont because of the airport. If landing fees were enacted, careers like aerial survey, flight instruction, and even that food truck would be at risk. I would like to urge the city council to try not to strong-arm the airport community, but to find a way to work with us. We have some amazing ideas to help improve the airport's revenue that don't involve blanket solutions that won't address underlying problems. We are all very excited to see what the airport could become and to work with the city to help get it there. I hope we can create a future of working alongside with each other for the betterment of the airport and Longmont as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Sky Bauer.
Good evening, Mayor Peck and city council members. My name is Sky Bauer. I live at 2521 Danbury Drive. I've always loved watching the planes overhead at Vance Brand Airport, and that's honestly what really has sparked my interest for aviation. I'm here tonight as a student, a youth leader in our community, and someone who truly values what this airport brings to Longmont. When I was younger, my family and I would go out to the airport to watch the planes take off and land. I loved watching the skydivers and hearing the airplanes pointing out my favorite colors. Later on, I got the incredible opportunity to go up in the air myself through the Young Eagles Rally, where pilots volunteer their time and resources to take kids out flying for free. That experience changed everything for me. I received a flight logbook and an EIA membership, and I'm now a proud member of Chapter 648. This experience and support of the EIA and other people at the airport really inspired me to study and to love aviation even more. I am partaking in the aviation program at the Innovation Center, and I am hoping to build myself a future in aviation. Beyond aviation, I'm involved in scouts and several school and community leadership roles. I mention this because I want you to see that youth like me are paying attention, and we really care about what happens in our city. This airport isn't just a place for planes. It's a place that inspires young people, it supports our local learning, and it helps us to dream bigger. Landy fees might sound small, but they send a huge message. If pilots have to pay extra to land here, fewer will come, which means fewer opportunities for programs like Young Eagles and less business for local businesses. My mom is a small business owner, and with her along with several friends have actually seen people come in to visit their businesses. That's local tourism, and that is an economic impact. These fees can hurt this very community and our connections that make Longmont so special. Vance Brand Airport isn't just a place for planes. It's a place where dreams take off. I may only be 17, but I can tell you this. When young people lose access to opportunities like aviation, we lose a part of what makes a city so inspiring for us. I could be your daughter or granddaughter. I'm someone learning, someone growing, someone hoping to make a difference. I hope you see this through my eyes, and you both know on these landing fees. Thank you for listening and caring about the next generation and our future of aviators.
Thank you, Sky. Jennifer Shearer.
Do I need to do something to start the timer?
No. She's going to start it.
Okay. Am I good? Okay. So I'm, I'm actually just a local person. I graduated from St. Brine Valley School District. I learned to drive on Airport Road before there was a neighborhood there, and it's always been odd to me that people complain about airport noise when, in order to get their house, they had to have seen airplanes taking off and landing and heard them. And so I'm kind of like, okay, and, you know, and I do, and I do live in that neighborhood. I have lived right there by the airport for like seven or eight years. I forget how long. I actually think the airport people should be the ones who are making the decisions regarding when landing fees are in the best interest of the airport and what's needed there. And when they're not, and I, when the airport says, let's not do this, then I'm like, let's wait and do it when the airport people who are the ones who are pilots, I'm not a pilot. I actually kind of like the airport traffic overhead. Part of the reason I chose to live there is because of the airport, because I like getting to see the older planes, and then you get to see the newer ones, and you get to watch skydivers jump out, and it's just fun. And like teenagers will go and park like right outside that fence where the sculptures, and they watch people taking off and landing, which, I mean, I just, I think it's fun. My, one of my sons actually did that for a date with his girlfriend. They went and got takeout and sat there and watched the planes take off and land. And I just, I think it's healthy and educational. Both of my daughters have gone skydiving. My son is actually, he took his initial pilot lessons here, actually with these guys. So I'm like, I think they're awesome. And also, it was, I have to, I was asking Kate a little bit more about the money thing because I was like, what is going on there? She told me that Vector has only 108 pilot, 108 clients who are, there's apparently 5,100 public airports, so they've only got like 2.2% of all the airports in the U.S. Of those 40, 40 are non-towered like Longmont, so that's 0.78%. And of those 40, only 15 are charging light aircraft, such as 0.29%. So the percentages keep getting very small, and it, again, I just feel like if the airport people are not for it, then, then we need to listen to the airport people and let the airport people decide what's best for the airport. Thank you.
You're welcome. Emily Bauer. No, no applause.
Good evening, Mayor Peck. Good evening, Mayor.
No, you're good.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Peck, City Council members. I'm Emily Bauer, and I currently reside at 2540 Sunset Drive. I come here tonight as a small business owner, a homeowner, a taxpayer, and a mom. For a number of reasons, I would like to ask the council to consider not taxing, not creating these landing fees to everyone. I don't believe that it should be a blanket fee. I don't agree that students, taxpayers of Longmont, hangar owners, those that are paying for, for gas here, fuel, when they refuel their planes, I don't, I don't think that it should just be a blanket fee. In 2023, St. Brine Valley School District received a state grant, and they were awarded additional grants as, apologize, as remarkable, as a remarkable opportunity to implement cutting-edge aviation systems to explore projects that would prepare students for the future of aviation and aeronautics. The pathways that St. Brine Valley School District has developed for the students has put Longmont on the map. The students are at the forefront of the new generation of aeronautics and are gaining, are gaining valuable real-world experience, not only learning new skills, but creating new relationships with veteran pilots, relationships with locals here. These are their families, they're integrating new opportunities for their friends, creating new pathways for these students that had not previously been open to them. I think adding more costs to these dreams that they are developing would create roadblocks to them achieving their goals. As a small business owner, I have clients who fly in from out of town. They come in with friends and family. They spend money here in Longmont, and they stay. We're now building new hotels to house these out-of-town guests, yet now we're going to be adding more reasons and more taxes for them to have to reconsider coming to Longmont. I would just like personally to ask that this not be a blanket fee, that there be some real considerations on who, who these taxes, who these fees will go to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett Hidkamp.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Good evening, city council members. Mayor Peck. My name is Brett Hidkamp, 229 Airport Road and 1151 Windermere Circle. I'm a Longmont resident, a hangar owner, and a pilot who uses Vance Brand Airport. I'm here tonight to speak firmly against the proposed landing fees. First, let's be honest about what this proposal represents. Landing fees are being pushed while the city continues to deny development at the airport, including hangar construction, FBO investment, and basic improvements that would make the airport self-sustaining. For years, pilots and aviation businesses have offered to invest their own money to grow this facility, and those opportunities have been blocked or delayed. Now, after refusing to allow growth, the city is proposing to charge pilots more to use an airport it won't even allow to develop. That's not sound management. That's punishing the very people who keep this airport operating. Second, there's no support for landing fees among the people who actually use and understand the airport. Every pilot group, every tenant, every operator have all voiced opposition. Pilots already pay fuel taxes, property taxes, and lease rates that fund airport operations. Imposing new fees will only discourage visiting pilots from stopping here and spending money, meaning fewer gallons of fuel sold and less tax revenue for this city. And let's be honest about the motivation. This is a thinly veiled attempt by a very small group of residents to reduce traffic and usage at the second-oldest airport in Colorado. The facts of the matter are simple. This airport was here first in 1945, and the vast majority of this small anti-airport group don't even live under the flight pattern. By convincing you to drive away transient aircraft, they'll reduce not only fuel sales, but the spending that visitors bring to our restaurants, hotels, and local attractions. That's less economic activity for Longmont, not more. The airport is one of Longmont's greatest assets. Many communities would love to have what Longmont has, but instead of embracing it, we're considering fees that shrink its value. In fact, the 2025 CDOT study says the airport generated 73.6 million in total business revenue. Landing fees are not the answer. Development is. I urge the council, don't penalize the aviation community for the city's own refusal to develop the airport. Don't put yourselves in the position of facing potential lawsuits as a result of a thinly veiled attempt at limiting air traffic. Don't let a statistically insignificant minority of vocal residents convince you the supermajority of owners and stakeholders are wrong by forcing you to adopt landing fees that will ultimately reduce your fuel sales, your tax revenue, and your local business activity. Instead, let's finally allow that growth, allow new hangars, new businesses, and develop a thriving airport that benefits all of Longmont. You won't do that with landing fees in place. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Chad Rennick.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Chad Rennick, 907 Champion Circle, aircraft owner, airport user, president of Experimental Aircraft Association, AKA EIA, Chapter 648. Thank you for your time and your service to the community. The EIA's worldwide organization was formed in Milwaukee, Wisconsin in 1953. One of the programs sponsored by the EIA is Young Eagles. That program introduces young, young people ages 8 to 17 to aviation by giving them an introductory ride into an aircraft. Pilots donate their time, their aircraft, their fuel for this program by instituting a landing fee. That will be detrimental to the program. This has been a very successful program, which is, was, has introduced over 2 million young people to the discovery of flight. Our airport, several, at our airport, several have gone on to fly for private companies and the airlines, and one girl's even gone on to fly F-35s for the Air Force. Along those lines, young people start flying. Flight training for a career is no different than going off to college. Adding landing fees will add significantly to their school debt, something we've all hear a lot about. It is a handful of people that make the decision that, it is, it is a handful of people that have made the decision to live near an airport and have now decided it's too busy and complain about it. While this town, county, state have all grown a lot, and everything has gotten a lot busier, we've all had to learn to assimilate. If the amount of traffic is the concern, and the majority of the traffic is coming from other airports, then why are you eager to charge the landing fees to the residents of Vance Brand? We already pay tax, or we already pay, pay to use the airport through our lease, fuel flow, tax, and property tax. Landing fees feel like a punishment instead of a solution to this situation. Since you claim that the airport is losing money, there are other more sustainable ways to fund the airport, like long-term capital of improvements. In my opinion, the airport has been poorly run and managed, and it's been, it has been for quite a while. I'm not blaming any one person, but I blame the process and the model. Maybe it would be advantageous to look into a different business model for managing the airport. I would be happy to sit down with staff to look at this. Thank you for listening. Please vote no again for landing fees, but why don't we even pause this item also for the next council? Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Rennick. Diane, are you going to say anything different than your husband? Because we've got a lot of people here, so.
Yes, I do plan to say things a few differently.
Okay.
But I still, I'm allowed there three minutes.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, city council members. I'm Diane Rennick, 907 Champion Circle. Yes, we live together.
Good.
Thank you for allowing us to speak here for three minutes, and I appreciate the respect of your full attention and consideration in that I'm asking you to vote against the landing fees this evening. First, and again, I'd like to wish the Longmont Airport a happy anniversary, as it was dedicated exactly 80 years ago today. I have clap on my thing, but I know I'm not allowed to clap.
You can raise your hand. Yay.
The tenants and hangar owners at Longmont Airport choose their careers and hobbies at this airport, just as many of you chose the parks you play in, the lakes you fish on, the bikes, the trails you ride on, your bikes on, and the open space you hike. Now imagine if every time you and your kids step foot at any of these places in a single day, over the course of a week, month, year... day, over the course of a week, month, year, or lifetime, that you had to pull out your wallet. Every time. Sounds like a ridiculous penalty for a taxpayer. Now how about if every time you did any of these activities, it made a sound? Happy sounds. Although perhaps sounds that only bothered a handful of people that lived by the lake, trail, or park. Just a reminder that all of these sounds are sounds of freedom. What if every time you left your house, whether that be by foot, by bike, by car, you were charged a fee to return back to your home? Knowing you already paid your full share through your rent, mortgage, and taxes, it feels like double taxation. Hangar owners already pay land, lease fees, taxes on their building, fuel tax flow at the pump, I know I got that jumbled, but that too feels like it's double, triple, and quadruple taxation. The address that I live at is not only near the airport, it's also near railroad tracks, both which I was fully aware of their existence before making the choice to move there. The airport has been here again for eighty years, and the railroad since the early 1900s, I think even before that. My choice to live there, again, my choice to live there. As former business owner of Flight Deck Grill at the airport, I can say this business depends on aircraft arrivals for breakfast and lunch. Think about it, if you knew you were going to be charged a fee just to drive into a parking lot of a restaurant, would you frequent that restaurant? Probably not. You'd find somewhere else to go. The people of Longmont elected each of you to represent us, all of us, not just the loud minority. Please do not bend a knee to the few residents that choose to move close to the airport and complain. Also, I please ask you to consider the close proximity to the airport when the next building of a high-density neighborhood or housing project is going to be in effect, as it's just going to create more complaints. Think about it, why would there not be noise if you live near an airport, park, lake, trail, railroad, any of those things? Thank you, and please end this nonsense and vote against the landing fees. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Ian Springsteen.
It's our, our local airport has always been more than just a runway. It's a lifeline for our community. It connects us to jobs, to families, to opportunity, but right now, one thing is holding it back. The potential for landing fees. Landing fees might seem like a reasonable way to bring in revenue, but in reality, they discourage private pilots and lower-income student pilots from using our airport, which turns my career path into more of an elitist pursuit. By making Longmont a destination and not having landing fees, we can make our airport more attractive and accessible. More flights coming in means more travelers spending money. Our hotels, restaurants, and shops, it means more tourism and more visibly, for our, more visibility for our region. No landing fees can also help train the next generation of pilots. Student pilots and general aviation operators often struggle with costs, and our community could become a center for affordable flight training if we keep landing free and welcoming. In short, this, it's about making our airport a hub of opportunity and energy rather than a place weighed down by unnecessary barriers. Let's keep, let's keep open the skies to everyone and help the airport and our community truly take off. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Springsteen.
Todd Springsteen, 2072 Ridgeview Way in Longmont. Most of everything I was going to say has already been said, so I won't bore you with repeating that, but with the, with the potential for landing fees, I think you're also going to have a detriment to safety with people not wanting to go out and fly as much. We have requirements as pilots to maintain currency and proficiency, and we have to do at least three landings, takeoff and landings every ninety days to carry passengers, and you could potentially see a reduction in that with just trying to beat that bare-bones minimum, and we don't want pilots that are just doing the bare-bones minimum, right? We want people out there doing what they need to be proficient instead of just legal and, and being as safe as possible. So we've already touched on some of the numbers. My, my quick napkin math was, you know, a potential for a 21% increase in a standard pattern lesson for a student pilot where you're going to get maybe ten landings in in an hour and a half-ish, and that's really burning that pattern up, right? So we're adding a lot more money to that, again, for, for people who may not be able to afford that extra fee. So in short, I'd like to encourage the, the vote of a no on this and not moving this forward, and look at developing the airport, making it a destination with restaurants, maybe a coffee shop, more hangar space, you know, sky's the limit there, pun intended. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jay Epstein.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. My name is Jay Epstein. I live at 1871 Queen's Drive here in Longmont. I have been a member of the community here in Boulder County for about thirty years. My family, my background is I used to own a restaurant up on the hill in the university in Boulder, and I have been a full-time skydiver, fun jumper here in Longmont for the last twenty-six years. I've made approximately forty-five hundred skydives in the area, and yeah, this is my home. I chose, my family owns, I property manage for my family. I, I have chosen to live in Longmont and not live in Boulder for various reasons, and one of them is, you guys are straight to the point, you normally do things right, please do the right thing, and don't charge fees, don't chase business away. Let's just take, I mean, there's, the aviation community is huge, it's large. Let's just take skydiving as a very small sect. Skydivers, on average, on the weekend, there's forty to seventy fun jumpers that are there all day long, making fun jumps. Another seventy-five to one-hundred-and-twenty-five tandems, I'd say come out on a Saturday or a Sunday. Those tandems spend so much money. As an old restaurant owner, I just understand what they bring to the community. Each, let's say a third of those groups that come out to make tandems decide, and they do, they ask it manifest, they say, where should we go eat? Where should, we want to celebrate, we want to, you know, they're spending, these groups, I'd say there's twenty-five to fifty, twenty-five to fifty groups each Saturday and Sunday that go out and spend their money here in Longmont, at restaurants, at bars, and stuff, after they've spent a considerable amount of money at the airport, and all of that is tax revenue that's coming to you guys, and that is really just one very small sect. I mean, we're not even talking about everything else. So I beg you, after, you know, watching, you know, Boulder fall into these traps of the NIMBYs showing up, the Neighborhood Hill Association, redevelopers, all of these things that have affected that community in such a negative way, I ask you to just honor the rest of the community. The, the majority of people here don't want these fees. They don't represent a good thing, they represent going backwards, not forwards. So please, again, don't add these fees to aviators that are here to aviate. Thank you.
Thank you. Simon Spiro.
Oh, you turned the microphone off. There you go.
Hello, Mayor Peck and Council members. Thank you for your time. My name is Simon Spiro. I'm a resident of Longmont for the last five years at 4221 Florentine Drive, and when I moved here, I knew full well about the airport. When we were looking at houses, one of the things that actually attracted me to Longmont was seeing the skydivers and all the colorful parachutes. Little did I know that five years later, I'd be a resident, a student pilot at Aerosphere. When I was younger, my dad used to take me to the airport to watch the planes take off. Not here, I grew up in New York, and I always thought it'd be interesting to become a pilot, but life happened, and I took other paths, working in the tech industry right now. And when I lost my dad, my wife thought it would be helpful to reconnect with that and got me a flying lesson at Aerosphere. So I went up for my first flight and was absolutely thrilled at the experience, and I decided that getting my private pilot's license was something that I had to do. About halfway through, maybe a little bit more, and so far, landings have been pretty challenging, as I think many pilots would attest to, especially when they were first starting. I've had to make a hundred-and-sixty-nine landings so far in my training since July, and at the landing fees proposed at seven dollars, that would have increased my training fees by twelve-hundred dollars, and if we were charging by gross weight, it would have been an additional twenty-five-hundred dollars for my training just to get the private pilot's license so far. Private pilot's license requires at a minimum forty hours of training. Imagine someone who is younger looking to go pursue a job in aviation. They have to have a minimum two-hundred-and-fifty hours just to get a commercial license, and fifteen-hundred hours if they want to fly with United, or Delta, or any of the major airlines. That cost adds up on those landings and could be prohibitively expensive and eliminate a great career path for Longmont residents and make it much, much harder for them to pursue those types of jobs. I work in tech, and a lot of people want to pursue jobs in that area, but I see with AI coming, there's not as many opportunities in that field, but aviation presents an opportunity that's not going away anytime soon, and I think it's important for you to consider these things as you review these landing fees. Lastly, I'll say, I know not everybody in Longmont is a fan of the airport or use the airport. Just as I'm not someone who uses the library very often or at all, and I've never used the recreation center, to me, the airport is a resource that is very critical to me being a resident here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to interrupt this just for a moment because I've heard seven-fifty as what the landing fee is going to be, I've heard ten dollars. The Airport Advisory Board does not get to set those fees. No one gets to set those fees except this council, and nothing has been decided at all. So don't, don't use that in your head, get that in your head because it has not been decided. Lloyd Fisher.
Hello, my name's Lloyd Fisher, 2143 Sand Dollar Drive.
Lloyd, can you just push that microphone up a little bit? You're taller than, there you go.
I'm a low-tech guy. And I'm also humbled by people who've gone before me here. I'd like to offer a little bit different perspective, more than just the landing fee issue. I've spoken to you before about the tremendous opportunities that I think the airport represents, and I still feel that way. I love airplanes, and each year, there are two particular days that I try to fly. Nine eleven is one, and Memorial Day is one.
You're doing fine.
I don't know if I can do this. I've spoken to a hundred-and-fifty NASA people in a meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. You can do this.
A Cessna one-seventy-two or my Satabrae going over somebody's house, that is not airplane noise. Picture yourself in the belly turret of a B-17 at ten thousand feet in broad daylight, going deep into Germany, you got cigarette butts stuck in your ears because that's all you have. You're fighting for our freedoms. That's airplane noise. Put yourself in a B-25 on the deck of the USS Hornet. Do Little's Raid. Three thousand horsepower at full throttle, ten feet from your head. You know there is no hope of a safe landing at the end of that mission, fighting for our freedoms.
Thank you very much. Gary Stube.
Good evening, Mayor Peck and Council members. I'm Gary Stube, 229 Airport Road. I have been a pilot for thirty-four years, flying single-engine airplanes, four-thousand-five-hundred hours, and I applaud everybody that goes before me with different suggestions for options with the airport, but I'm going to give you a personal perspective. You have heard about the Young Eagles program? I've flown two-hundred-and-seventy kids between the ages of seven seventeen, seven and seventeen, giving them their first airplane ride. That's what this kind of funny-looking hat is. These pins represent each year that I've flown ten or more kids in the Young Eagles program, so I've been doing it since the program started. I've flown doctors and nurses to Mexico in the Flying Samaritans program, and set up, where we set up clinics in the rural mountains of Baja. I commuted to work for fifteen years in my airplane, and I've also acted as a mentor at the Innovation Center when they helped, to help them, the students build an RV-12, one of which, one of my students is here, Skye, who's already spoken. It's more than just a hobby, and I don't just go poking holes in the sky, I do it all for a reason, and I, I believe I've made a difference in the community, flown all different kinds of kids. And, and I love doing it, and I'm going to keep doing it, I'm going to do it until, until I can't fly anymore. I don't know how much longer that's going to be, I'm sixty-eight years old, but I intend to keep doing it until I can no longer fly. And I, I've paid all the expenses for all of those things, flying to Mexico, flying the Young Eagles, everything. I've never been paid to fly, I've, I've paid for all of that, and I really would resent the fact of having to pay a landing fee to come home from, from doing these volunteer programs that I do, that I'm already paying significant amount of money to serve the community in this way. So I respectfully request that you vote to remove Item C from your consent agenda tonight and not vote on it, just remove it from the consent agenda and drop the whole issue tonight. I know you're, you'd like to kind of wrap things up before the council change is over, and this is the easiest way to do that. Just remove it from the agenda tonight, and we'll be done with it, and it'll be over. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Foley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kyle Foley. I live at 2331 Santa Fe Drive here in Longmont. I'm a board member of a nonprofit at the airport. I did all my flight training at the airport, and I'm a senior at MSU Denver studying airport management. I care deeply about this airport because I see its potential every single day, but I also see what's holding it back. For years, the airport has been stalled and stagnant. We talk about hangar shortages, infrastructure needs, and future development year after year, and nothing changes. It's not because people don't care, it's because the city structure we're operating under wasn't built for growth. That's where an airport authority comes in. An airport authority is a dedicated, independent organization that runs the airport like a business. It still serves the public and works closely with the city, but is not bogged down by the same layers of municipal bureaucracy. It can make decisions faster, manage its own revenue, apply for grants, and reinvest earnings directly back into the airport instead of waiting for city approval or competing with unrelated departments for funding. You don't have to look far to see how effective that model can be. Greeley is an airport authority. They have modern facilities, a sit-down restaurant on the field, and a real sense of momentum. Meanwhile, RFBO still looks like a double-wide trailer. That's not the fault of anyone who works there, it's a symptom of an airport that hasn't been given the tools or flexibility to grow. I also want to be clear, I don't support landing fees. They're not a solution, they're a setback. At a community airport like ours, landing fees don't build revenue, they drive it away. Pilots will simply take their business, their fuel purchases, and their visitors somewhere else. What we need instead is a vision that invites people in. When we build an airport the community believes in, a place where families can come for events, students can learn about aviation, and businesses can see real value, the noise complaints fade into the background. People stop seeing the airport as a nuisance and start seeing it as a community asset that it truly is. If we want the airport to thrive, we have to let it operate like the business it already is. Creating an airport authority is- Creating an airport authority is how we do that, and it's how we finally move from talking about progress to actually seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lance Whitaker.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Lance Whitaker. I've been a resident for forty-some-odd years now. I'd like to first say today is National Wild Foods Day, so go out and get you some strawberries. It is also National First Responders Day, so thank you, officers. It is also National Internal Medicine, and I'm a very good fan of that one. And it is also National Chocolate Day, so I hope you all had a piece of chocolate out there. If not, go ahead and help yourself to the chocolate that's out there. I'd like to say something about Longmont Public Media. I know they probably don't got anybody here today, but like always, we're happy to, you know, support you guys and hopefully get some more funding from you. I'd also like to say a couple words about the Longmont Airport. I'd like to remind you that not only does it inspire small pilots and young pilots, but we've also trained an astronaut or two. So, make sure you understand that that airport is a very vital support of Longmont and its community. I'd hate to see it go, as for damn sure, and landing fees. It's not a really good idea. I like Greeley's Airport. I'm a balloonist, so we don't generally use airports, and our landing fees are usually a bottle of champagne to the landowner. So, I sort of feel for these people, because I know how much flight training is taken when it comes to being a student pilot. I have several student pilots who are friends of mine, and I've flown oftentimes from Longmont Airport. So, please do not install landing fees, because then I won't be able to see my friends as often as I do. Thank you, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Lance. Georgetta Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. I wasn't going to talk about that, but I do go along with what they say about the airport. I've been here eighty-seven years, so they need, it needs to be supported. We all like to fly. I've flown many years ago, when I was a kid, or in high school, a young guy flew me. So, that isn't what I came for. I want to acknowledge Joan for being our mayor. That's really one reason I came, is that she's going to be leaving here, and she's done a good job. Everybody likes her. And myself, what I wanted to say was a better city, a good city. Of course, mine's indoor-outdoor skating that we need for the young people. And this here stands for grandma, mother, grandchild, child, and better shopping stores and food places. Our stuff's going out of this city into other places, our money is. So, I'm hoping you're all thinking about that and realizing that we need to do a better job. But like this airport thing, I think that's wonderful, so I'm not going to take all night, because I didn't realize we'd have lots and lots of wonderful people tonight. This here I made twenty years ago for church. It's boys and girls, so you see all these funny things on here. Anyway, Lord bless you, keep doing a wonderful job, and think about what they all told you really nice. You're wonderful people. Be those wonderful people.
Thank you, Georgetta. Sarah Weaver.
Hello. My name is Sarah Weaver, and I'm a flight instructor over at the Longmont Airport. I love my job. I love teaching people how to fly, especially students who started like me, who wanted to change their career and thought about being a pilot for a really long time. Those are my people. The Flight School at Longmont Airport provides that for me and for countless others. Now, when you took the job to be a city council member, you might not have expected to have the ability to hold the employment status of dozens of people in the palm of your hand with a single yes or no vote. But with the implementation of landing fees, you just might... The flight schools and students, the FBOs, even the food truck that we all love, we can't afford the financial blowback that the implementation of landing fees will cause. The FBO won't sell fuel. The food truck won't have business, and my students that I love so much are going to have to go elsewhere, because they're not going to be able to afford me anymore. Also, the Flight School owner is going to go, so I'm not even going to be there anymore. These pilots also, that's just like on the airport property. As you guys have heard tonight, a lot of these pilots are going out into the community, experiencing Longmont and spending their money as well. My ask tonight is that you reframe the question from, should we implement landing fees, yes or no, to, should dozens of people lose their jobs? And more specifically, should I lose my dream job? Because that's what it is at Longmont. All of this is to say that implementing landing fees has a far greater impact on the livelihoods of people who rely on the airport. So, please vote no against landing fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Sherry Malloy.
Good evening. Sherry Malloy, sixteen-thirty-two Sherman Way. Changing subjects. Longmont resident since nineteen-eighty-six. With the election next week, I'd like to thank Mayor Peck and all city council members for your many dedicated years of service. Specifically, I'd like to recognize council members Aaron Rodriguez and Shakita Yarborough, as you will be ending your time serving on council. Thank you. I'm here to speak to the AltaVita application for a variance to our one-hundred-foot riparian protection setback along Dry Creek One, behind the King Supers South. I have three points. One, most importantly, we need to file the land development code, unless there is an exceptional and compelling reason to do otherwise. It is not council's job to make accommodations so developers can build. Riparian protection setbacks reduce exposure to flooding, safeguard negative development impacts on water quality, improve biological and ecological functions, and wildlife habitat movement corridors. The policy was given lots of time and deliberation when the Wildlife Management Plan was updated in 2019. That included multiple meetings with the public and review and approval by appropriate city boards. This extensive process resulted in the addition of protection setbacks to our development code later in 2019. In their August presentation, the developers said they'd always intended to build out the entire property, and then in 2019, the setbacks were added to code. That's not telling the whole story. The setback ordinance happened in 2007. That ordinance was in effect before AltaVita built any of their three senior housing facilities. Their memory care unit was built in 2012, the assisted living building in 2016, and the independent living building in 2019. The developer also maintains they want this variance to offer the full range of services for aging seniors. They already offer three of the four services, independent, assisted, and memory care. The only service they don't offer is skilled nursing, AKA a nursing home. This application is not for skilled nursing care, rather more independent living options. Their website indicates they currently offer eighty-three independent living apartments. Second point, the developer's not only seeking an unprecedented setback variance, it is asking for the entire one-hundred-foot protection setback. The Planning and Zoning Commission obviously had concerns, since they recommended cutting the proposal size by fifty percent. Boards and commissions' cautions and recommendations ought to be respected. Third point, if council approves this application, it will set a terrible precedent. It will send a message to developers that essential protections in our code can be modified and adjusted. Protections in our code must be honored and followed, unless there is an exceptional and compelling reason to do otherwise. This variance application does not meet that criteria and should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Dan Wolford. No, I'm sorry. One more, one more. Now it's J.D. Glitz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to offer my thoughts on the idea of charging landing fees at Vance Brand Airport as a lifelong general aviation pilot and retired airline pilot. I first heard of this possibility as a deterrent to local air traffic, and then later to balance the budget. Landing fees are a very poor way to sustain an airport. We should be doing all we can to make our airport a thriving operation, not encouraging pilots to avoid operating there. Vance Brand has great potential if operated as the asset it is for Longmont and the surrounding area. Getting an active FBO and helping them establish a profitable business would be a great first step. An active FBO brings in a steady income from fuel, maintenance, rentals, sales, et cetera, and brings more of the community in. If the airport discouraged this activity, the FBO would have very little incentive to locate here. By now, you all realize the higher student traffic is largely due to airline pilot shortage. With the elevated pilot salaries, many young people are trying to get qualified, but demand will drop, and then the cycle will repeat. When the economy falls, pilot salaries drop and airlines furlough. When that happens, the number of student pilots will drop significantly. Don't damage the airport just to get through this cycle. The Airport Advisory Board was correct in advising you not to enact landing fees. Thank you.
Thank you, J.D. Dan Wolford.
Dan Wolford, eighteen-fifteen Third Avenue. I'd like to start by saying thank you, in particular, to Mayor Peck. I greatly appreciate your friendship and your support over my career here at the city of Longmont, and you've helped us further the city's open space program, as well as those that are certainly leaving. I'm here to speak about twelve-B, the residence at Alta Vista, and the riparian setback. Riparian setbacks protect public health and safety by maintaining flood control and erosion control and water quality protective services strictly from a water perspective. The city's development code states that these riparian areas provide the city of Longmont and promote, preserve, and enhance important hydraulic, biological, ecological, aesthetic, recreational, and educational functions that rivers and streams provide. I know as a citizen of Longmont, and I help you as council members, don't want to give that up. Those were important aspects. The initial Wildlife Management Plan in 2005 developed the riparian setback recommendations, which were then included with the help of Brad School, at the time, the Development Planning Director, in 2007. The Wildlife Management Plan update in 2019 confirmed the importance and the enhancements of those riparian setbacks. When you think about it, this development code is nearly twenty years old, and went through pretty significant hundreds of hours of consultant time, staff time, and public input. And within a matter of minutes, without explanation or reasoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission turned that recommendation to fifty percent of that. Other city leadership, through the hopes of compromise, without discussion with staff and the public, we all know this has gone through, you know, it has a negative impact, at least to the public, in the process by which we've gone through this. If you look at some of the specific comments that are in the presentation by our developer, it says even the best habitats is of limited wildlife value if surrounded by intensive human use. When you look at their development plan, what are they bringing? They're not, there's no, there's nothing but intense use right up to the edge of... I truly believe this developer has ignored the code. And I hope that you deny this variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Brett Pommerville.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Brett Pommerville, and I live at fifty-eight forty-six Granville Avenue in Longmont. I was born in Longmont. I earned my pilot certificate in Longmont when I was in high school, and I'm a customer of the FBO, the food truck, and the Longmont Flight School. I also live directly under the airport traffic pattern, and I enjoy watching the planes go by. I urge the council to vote no on landing fees tonight. The city simply needs to do more homework on this. If the issue here really is generating more revenue for our airport, why are leaders looking at just one option? Why not also look at options used by the thousands of airports across the country, who operate successfully without landing fees? At last week's Airport Advisory Board meeting, city staff said that council wanted to hear about other airport revenue options. Here's just five that I heard. Hangar leases. There's huge demand along the front range, and we have airport land for more of them. Fuel sales. Today, we're letting Erie and others collect taxes that we should be getting, because we haven't built a fuel center for our own airport businesses. Airport solar farms. Greeley gets revenue from their airport solar. We should too. More aggressively pursuing FAA and state grants. Longmont pilots and airport users already pay fuel taxes into these trust funds. Let's get more of it back for Longmont. And as others have said, a modern and welcoming terminal. Again, look at Greeley. Take your family to Sunday brunch at their modern terminal and see how popular it is with both out-of-town pilots and local residents. Think of the tax revenue a nice terminal with nice restrooms and a restaurant could bring to Longmont. That's just five options that also need to be studied before the council can honestly make an informed decision about any new revenue ordinances for the airport. What I know tonight is that there is no community consensus on the vague, open-ended, unlimited, and unregulated landing fees that are proposed in the agenda, Item nine-C. The draft doesn't even say that they have to be spent on the airport. I urge the council not to rush a controversial and flawed landing fees ordinance tonight. Take nine-C off the consensus agenda. Take time to listen to all of the affected community, and seriously consider the breadth of airport revenue options before considering any landing fee ordinance. We probably have the tools that we need to sustain our airport for another eighty years. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryce Bennett.
Bryce Bennett, two-four-five-zero Airport Road. Good evening, members of city council. My name is Bryce Bennett. I'm fourteen years old, and I live in Longmont. I've been coming to Vance Brand Airport since I was four years old. I volunteered at last year's airshow. I'm a member of the EAA Chapter six forty-eight out here in Longmont, as well as the Young Eagles program. In this spring, I'll be taking aeronautic classes at the Innovation Center. I care deeply about aviation, the airport, and our community. I want to speak tonight about the proposed small craft landing fees at our city-owned airport, and why I believe they are a bad idea for the community, for students like me, and for the long-term viability of the airport. First, the airport has been a part of my life and lives of many other young people who dream of flying. Through the Young Eagles program, we introduce kids to aviation. While landing fees are imposed, especially for smaller aircraft and frequent pattern work, it discourages flight schools, pilots in training, and young people like myself from using the field. That means fewer opportunities for new pilots, fewer local students, fewer aviation jobs in our region in the future. Second, the airport is not just recreational, it is a real economic engine. Our airport serves jets, turboprops, and business aircraft every day, and contributes tens of millions of dollars in economic benefit to our community. If landing fees deter traffic, the economic return will shrink. That reduces local businesses, local fuel sales, local hangar activity, and the reason the airport is supported. Third, the threat to viability. The city council at the May twentieth meeting passed motions about gathering more information on landing fees, flight patterns, lease terms, and unleaded fuel. They also asked the Airport Advisory Board to evaluate communications in the noise abatement program. All of this signals that the airport is at a crossroads. Imposing landing fees before fully understanding their economic and training impacts could unintentionally harm the very foundation of small craft flying, the students, instructors, and local pilots who make this airport thrive. and local pilots who make this airport thrive. Finally, as someone who will soon be taking aviation classes, using this airport, possibly becoming a pilot, I ask you to consider how fees will affect students and young people. If fewer small planes are used in the field because of cost, there will be fewer instructors, fewer volunteers, and fewer opportunities for students. In conclusion, I urge you, do not enforce small craft landing fees at Vance Brand Airport until you've fully studied the impacts. Preserve this airport as a training field, as part of our community's future, and as a gateway for young people like me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bryce. Andy Gold.
Before I get started, Georgia, that's the most amazing hat I've ever seen in my entire life, ever. Fred. All right, we'll just keep it light. We've got a serious, a serious topic to discuss, though. Andy Gold, I live in War II, over there in Renaissance, right under the downwind pattern for runway 29 at Longmont. My daughter and son, she's somewhere, she's probably Duckin' Low, over there, have basically been, been raised on this airport. I'm going to share a couple of things to make this a little personal for, for everyone here. Growing up, my parents were never together. My father spent his time either in prison or trying to recover from substance abuse in and out of hospitals. My mother worked two jobs just to make sure that there was hot food in the house for me, which I'm eternally grateful for. Both of them are, have now since passed, for sure. But I want to share with you that the only thing that kept me going as a young person was the amazement that, that I found in the human existence when I looked up and saw an airplane overhead, often thinking that that was both impossible for humans to achieve and for me personally to ever, to ever be involved with. That was the, the fuel that sparked me to keep going and eventually found my way into the military, fixing airplanes at first, and then becoming a pilot second. So I want you to know that everybody's background at that airport is different, and everybody's there for, for various reasons, but the, the opportunities that aviation presents, a massive swath of, of people regardless of their race, their background, their color, their economic, current economic situation, it's an inspiration to people. And I, and I'm a realist, and I understand that not everybody loves aircraft noise and not everybody loves seeing airplanes go overhead, but I think we deserve to have honest conversations and not hyperbole about what goes on over the airport. I take walks with my, my wife and kids, and again, I live right under the downwind path, and honestly, I've never had to stop a conversation, even with airplanes constantly going overhead. And recognizing the fact that not everybody loves that, as I mentioned, anyone who comes up here and says to you, "I, I couldn't even continue my cellphone call, or I was deafened", that's hyperbole, and we need to have honest conversation about what the true noise situation is i- in those patterns. Can you hear the airplanes? Of course. Is it much more than a vehicle going down the road? Not really. It, it isn't. So I urge you all to think through what the options are and what an asset the airport is for young people and old people alike before you rush into ill-conceived landing fee.
Thank you, Andy. Steve Engelke.
I need to defer. It could be a later session, or I am not a Longmont resident.
Oh, thank you, yes. At the end of the meeting, there is a final public. Thank you for letting us know. Who is this next one? Yes.
Howard Morgan.
Homer Morgan.
Howard?
It looks like Homer.
I think so.
I think so.
Mr. Morgan.
I'm Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Howard Morgan. My address is 1932 Amethyst Drive in Longmont. I've been an investor in the airport since, for 28 years. I've been a professional pilot and flight instructor since 1962, and I'm highly disappointed that you even consider landing fees. I seriously doubt that you have any idea how you attract this or administrate it, and we have no idea who you would charge. Would you charge hangar owners, skydivers, medical evac airplanes, corporate jets, ultralights? We have no idea. Plus, the flight school people would continue to come here, but it would be financially painful to the people that are learning to fly, which is already very expensive. So I would hope that you would consider dropping this problem or program and consider fixing up the airport. It's a dismal airport compared to many other airports around the country, especially little airports with a town of 5,000 population. I would challenge you all, a number of people have talked about Greeley, which is the closest good example, I would challenge you all, which I did one other time, to go over to Greeley and spend some time there and see what a real prospered, prosperous airport looks like, and come back here and make some moves to fix up the airport and make it more prosperous. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Dan Peters.
Good evening, Madam, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Dan Peters. I live at 1438 Morningside Drive, although if you ask my wife, I live at 229 Airport Road. We have a hangar out at the airport. Most of my points have already been made, so I'll keep it brief and save you a couple minutes tonight. I started flying out at the airport, at the Longmont Airport in 1990 when I was 17 years old, and now I'm a captain and instructor for one of the largest airlines in the world. Let's be honest, the landing fees are about noise, and that's going to lead to, likely lead to a Part 16 action with the FAA, and that's a headache that the city doesn't need. If it really is about revenue, or if it really is about the revenue issue, as many people have said before, hangars are the fastest way to generate a stable stream, and we desperately need hangars. If you think housing prices have gone up, hangars have far eclipsed the, the prices of houses, and we're, we could end up losing our one and only mechanic at the airport due to the cost of the hangars. Another option that hasn't been spoken about tonight is about 15 years ago, there was a study to lengthen the runway, and some estimates of increased fuel foliage, fuel flowage with the business jets was estimated. So we could dust off that study and look at lengthening the runway, although I realize that's more of a pipe dream at this point. I had another point about the cost, but it looks like the landing fee cost is, hasn't been decided yet. So that's all I have. Please vote no on the landing fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Hexo. I'll keep trying.
Good evening. My name is Eric Hexco, 9749 Schlegel. I've been flying for over 45 years with a commercial instrument rating. Did I get me? Okay. I got written down here a couple of things here. Airport usage in emergency situations such as fires, floods, and earthquakes, problems right now we're discussing mainly is due to noise, due to large amounts of students being sent to KLMO, to our Vance Brand, for training. My suggested ideas is if you, hopefully you don't do this, but if you do add landing fees, it should not be due to aircraft that are based at the airport, should be people coming from someplace else. Schools that are sending students to our airport that have, should send their students that go to airports that have low populations near their airports, such as Greeley or Fort Collins. The other thing is, thing, usage of the airport for during emergencies. I got involved in one in 1989 when I was living in San Jose. In October of 1989, there was a major earthquake in the Bay Area, which took out roads, bridges, overpasses, and many of the other things. Many of the coastal towns were cut off. Those were small airports, were supplied by a group of pods, which I was a part of. That was pretty gratifying to be able to see people being happy seeing you, bringing a plane load of stuff and filling up their pickups and stuff. Anyway, that's what I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Ernie Friedman.
Hi. Good morning, afternoon, evening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I don't, I'm not an Ernie. Emmy Friedman, 5723 Forley, Longmont. Let's keep the airport open. Please vote yes to the landing fees. Fees will provide sustainability and much-needed upkeep and improvements. One model provided to the AAB recently showed a generated revenue of $350,000 annually in landing fees. I have also heard concerns about Sundance pilots being intimidated with a landing fee. For a number of years, Sundance has been hosted by Park City. Visitors would fly in to the nearby Heber Valley Airport, which does have landing fees, and it has been successful. Please make the fiscally responsible choice voting yes on landing fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Sejod.
My name's Ed Sejod. I live at 1213 Twin Peaks Circle in Longmont. I've lived here almost 50 years, and during that time, I've paid all Longmont taxes and all Longmont user fees without whining about them. I pay a user fee every time I take my grandkids to the Longmont Rec Center, to a Longmont Swimming Pool, to the Longmont Museum, and every other activity center in Longmont where a user fee is required. I pay an entry fee to Union Reservoir when we picnic there in the summer, and I pay an extra fee to bring my boat onto the lake. Every significant activity center in Longmont requires payment of a user fee. Nobody objects to that because it's obvious that those who use a facility should contribute to its upkeep. Why should the Longmont Airport be any different? Why should Longmont taxpayers subsidize an airport primarily maintained for the benefit of hobby flyers who can afford to buy airplanes and afford the costs to operate them, but who say that they can't support the airport facility itself? Today, the airport overwhelmingly operates for the benefit of Denver-area flight schools, that is, non-resident businesses that ignore the rules of our airport and teach their students to ignore the rules also. The airport should be treated the same as the rec center, the pools, the golf courses, and all other activity centers in Longmont. The airport merits no exception to the rule that those who use a thing should pay for what they use. In the past, there wasn't much activity at the airport, so nobody really cared about it, and the airport flew under the radar of having to contribute to its own maintenance. This was an oversight by the city, but since 2022, our airport unwillingly became an extension of the Broomfield Airport for the purpose of hosting their flight schools. These non-resident businesses should contribute their fair share to the operation of the airport and pay for what they use, just as Longmonters do for all other activity centers. Users should pay in proportion to the amount of their usage. Landing fees per landing is a rational, proportionate way to allocate costs of maintaining the airport. The time for freeloadings should end. The council should vote to assess airport user fees, and the details can be worked out later. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Kasim.
You know him?
Good evening. Jonathan Kasimir, 1900 Creekside Drive, Longmont. I'm Longmont native. I was a young eagle here in Boulder County, and I always enjoyed the airplanes in Longmont Airport. I also am a plane owner and a lucky enough to have a hangar at our Longmont Airport. And I would say lucky because they're in high demand. I will too pitch my voice to say no to landing fees, but I want to take a different approach because I'm glad to be part of the big voice that you're hearing tonight, and I'd like to help in a different way. I feel that the decision for enacting landing fees is premature, and the presentation done at the Aviation Advisor, Airport Advisory Board last week that I attended significantly demonstrated how premature it was for numerous reasons, but one of the big ones was that you guys asked for a fiscal analysis, and the presentation and the spreadsheet that was shown, from what it looked like to me, and I come from an engineering background, it looked like the spreadsheet was erroneously representing the expenses and was the shortfall that ended, and ends the airport in 2029 is incorrect. So I would say take that projection with a grain of salt. And also, it's sort of the way the line items go, the revenue is misrepresented, and it points to, or it sort of hides that hangar leases is the biggest portion of revenue, and that's the biggest thing we're asking for, and that can significantly go up. You heard that it's $300,000 a year income for instating the landing fees that were projected and presented there. That is a guess, and it also didn't really highlight that the expenses incurred to instate the system for collecting landing fees actually started to increase year over year, whereas the income did not. And in all likelihood, as you have heard today, the income from landing fees actually may go down, so it's kind of a failing endeavor to begin with. There are logistics on the horizon that actually may make collecting landing fees very difficult and may end up, if you sink a bunch of expense into establishing a system that goes away in a year, well, that's just going to hurt the airport, so. Hangars, hangars, and more hangars. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Friedman.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Like everyone that's spoken tonight, I'm for the health and sustainability of Vance Brand Airport. It's a community asset, as it has been stated over and over this evening, and the airport is running at a severe deficit year after year. Revenue is needed if we're going to keep that airport and sustain and improve that airport, significant revenue. Landing fees are a sensible, rational way of raising, of raising revenue. Landing fees is, are doable, they're sustainable, they're reliable, and they're equitable. It's spread out, and it can even be modified as needed. Landing fee implementation is in the control of the sponsor and owner of the airport, which is the city of Longmont, and it requires no outside permission, it has no restrictions, and there's no strings attached. I've heard something about noise. This has nothing to do with noise. This is talking about raising revenue for the airport. I'm also a little surprised that one gentleman said flying is... flying is an expensive activity. And with an expensive activity, already expensive activity, I don't understand why pilots, aircraft operators would object to paying a few dollars for a landing fee when that is going to go toward collectively a significant income to make Longmont potentially like really and have all these wonderful things. But you've got to raise the revenue. And for the users of the airport, with small fees per landing, that seems a very reasonable way to go. And that is in the control of the city of Longmont. No one has the authority to object otherwise. It's something we can do. It's positive. It's for the airport. Let's keep that airport open. Let's make it a really good airport. We need revenue for it. That part of it is a business. So it's the way to go. Please vote for and implement landing fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Jim Voss.
Thank you for hearing. And I don't need to repeat all the things that have been said before. I think it's pretty clear. An awful lot of people do not support landing fees. What I wanted to do was to thank you, Mayor Peck, for responding to my email where I was strongly opposed to landing fees, and I was quite surprised that you responded. Thank you for doing that. And I think it's greatly appreciated. But there was a comment that you made in there, and it reflects some of the misunderstanding, I think, that others have expressed tonight who are in favor of landing fees. And if you don't mind me quoting, you said, "The pilots flying in and out of Vance Brand have had decades of not paying to use it." And that's just not true. We pay every time that we fly. We pay fuel use fees that can come back to the airport. Most of the airport is supported by federal funds through the FAA. The airport is not running at a deficit, is my understanding, and is forecast maybe by 2029 if something isn't done. But at this time, it's not in a deficit, so there's no need to raise additional funds. And every month, I pay a land lease fee. I have paid tie-down fees, multiple other fees for use of an airport, but never for landing, except when I was living in Germany for a while. But this is the United States where we have a lot more freedoms. And so I strongly discourage landing fees and hope that you'll support the airport in other ways that'll be more productive and help us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Stephen Miller.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Stephen Miller from Longmont, 10594 North 65th Street. And I'm in favor of landing fees, but I certainly would not want to punish the pilots who are based in Longmont. What I would hope would be that the landing fees would be reflected in all of the people that are flying in from outside of Longmont. I happen to monitor where the flights are coming from every morning when I walk out from my house. And frequently, between 6:00 and 10:00 in the morning, the first 10 planes are from Jeffco, or perhaps from Erie, or from Loveland. But they're not from the airport here, Vance Brand. In fact, I often wonder, how do the pilots who are stationed here or have their planes in Vance Brand, how do they get up? I mean, if planes are coming in, touch and go, and taking off, how do the pilots here get up into the air? And maybe they wait until after 10 o'clock. I've also heard frequently about, if you don't like airplanes, you shouldn't have bought a house near an airport. Well, I moved here in 1989, and I was taking flying lessons at that time because I wanted to fly a twin-engine plane because I had a place in Jackson, Wyoming, and I wanted to be able to go there to fly and come home. And I needed a twin-engine certificate. I didn't end up getting the certificate, but I still live here. And when I bought, I was happy with the planes going over, and I was taking flying lessons. That isn't what's happening right now. When 10 out of 10 planes come from Jeffco or some other place, that's where they're coming from, and that's where I would like to see the landing fees come from. You probably all have seen the newspaper report on September 27th saying Rocky Mountain Metro Airport in Broomfield has the highest number of safety-related incidents in the 29 million square miles that make up the United States. So we have these planes that are coming from an airport that has a lot of safety problems. I happen to have a field near my house that two planes have had engine failure and landed there, or crashed there. And so I'm really, I'm not happy about planes coming in from Jeffco to land in our airport. I think it's a danger, and I'm opposed to that. So I also think that the mixing up the planes and the business, the reason...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Matt Menza.
Matt Menza, 2235 Parkview Drive. Professional pilot after 30 years, or for 30 years. We'll talk about proper governance with respect to the landing fees. So you're all elected to make smart decisions for the city. Part of that decision-making means you do your due diligence, and you make intelligent decisions about critical and sensitive topics. You haven't done that with this topic. And so you need to make a motion to suspend this until after the elections, until you get more time to do your due diligence. There's been zero analysis of alternative methods for funding a supposed budget shortfall, which has not been proven that that's an issue. You haven't discussed any other ways to create revenue for this airport. And the city, and the people of this city deserve that due diligence. You haven't done it. So you're ramming down a vote that can potentially end or destroy the viability of the airport. And that's a fact. And the fact is, there's a lot of misinformation about this airport. It's not a golf course. It's not a rec center. It's funded completely different, and I wish we'd get some more information out of the public about that. The federal government, the state government, and then it's up to the operators of the airport to make sure they're doing their due diligence, to invest in the airport and make it prosperous. And you haven't done that for 10 years. For 10 years, nothing's happened to this airport because the city hasn't done jack. So you can't vote on something that you haven't given the public, the voters of this city, the due diligence on. It's actually negligent, and it's very, very cavalier. So you've got to do better work. And I know you went around this through because of the elections, and I know there was some turnover. But if you're one foot out the door, you still owe it to the people of the city to do the right thing. Fact, you put landing fees on it, it'll blacklist this airport, and it's going to be in dire trouble. Fact, if you blacklist this airport and you do landing fees, you're going to open yourself up to litigation that this city can't afford. And then the taxpayer's going to have to pay for your mess. And then the next people who are in these seats are going to have to clean up your mess, and it's going to be nasty. Totally nasty. Fact, this airport and all the users that come from other places that use our airport, they all pay into it because they're paying federal taxes, they're paying state taxes, and they're paying user fees, or landing fees, or not landing fees, user fees. They're paying fuel surcharges at our airport and other airports. That's how these airports are funded. And then the obligation of the user is to make sure they invest in that airport to make sure it's creating the proper revenue. You haven't done that for 10 years. So you can't vote on something that you haven't done any due diligence to. Does that make sense? I hope the public understands that this is, we've got to elect people who are not being cavalier. It's enough of this in Longmont, all right? Do your due diligence, defer this for later, and let's do it right for the people of this town.
Okay. Dick? I'm sorry. Yes, Gabrielson. Thank you. Dick Gabriel, there he is. Oh, dear. Oh, yeah. This is just for the residents. Thank you, though. John Beer? Is there a John? Bees? I'm sorry. The last name says John C. Bees? Bees. Okay, thank you, John. Kirsten Bose?
Hi. Kirsten Base, 402 Grant. I'm speaking tonight in favor of adopting a landing fee ordinance. Obviously, that opinion is in the minority of people in the room here tonight, but I'm trying to represent the majority of the people in the city. The many residents of Longmont are paying more for the airport through tax dollars than the users of the airport. And that doesn't seem right because the residents never agreed to cover these costs. For the airport to become self-sufficient, it needs to charge the right people, its users and all of its users, those that are flying in from nearby airports and repeatedly using the runway without ever stopping to spend money in Longmont, and those that are based here as they are the ones who want to see improvements. We've heard it all night. They want to see improvements to the airport. Improvements require money. And this money can be raised by applying landing fees. It is also my hope that some of this money will be used to expedite a transition to a safer, unleaded fuel. So please vote in support of landing fees for all the users of LMO.
Thank you, Kirsten. Scott Stewart.
Mayor Peck, Members of Council, Scott Stewart, 229 Grant Street. I do not live underneath the airport. I'm outside of the influence zone. Start with that. Airports cost money. The city has provided some really good overview information of the budget. Every pilot, everybody talking about landing fees, please, please consider spending some time on YouTube. Watch the September 23rd City Council meeting or the October Airbnb Airport Advisory Board meeting. The presentation by the city was, pretty much explains it. You guys need money. I can appreciate the enthusiasm of the aviation community, but so many fail to recognize the budget issues at the airport. This is not the first time the airport has had budget issues. Many years ago, the airport came to the council with a request for relief, and the council approved a discount to the cost of services provided. This discount comes at a cost, comes in an expense to the general fund. Hangar fees and fuel fees are not covering the budget expenses. I'm listening to the aviation community. Let's be honest about the airport that's 80 years old today. The number of airplanes that pay a tie-down fee and stay here is not being accurately represented in the seat-out economic impact report. Many of the arguments I'm hearing tonight are straight out of the AOPA communications. The AOPA is a national advocacy organization for pilots. They do not understand the budget challenges that this airport faces. We do not understand, they do not understand about Longmont. Everybody can go online, look at the budget. You can see, everybody's talking about fuel fees. Fuel tax refund from 2024, $8,137. Fuel flowage, $8,177. If you think you can run an airport in less than 20 grand, you're kidding yourself. We have self-sustainability, which is straight from the FAA. This chapter provides guidance and requirements that an airport remain as self-sufficient as possible under specific circumstances, self-sustaining principles. Airports must maintain a fee and rental structure that makes the airport as financially self-sustaining as possible. Sponsor funds. This is, every time you accept a grant, it has sufficient funds, you're talking about the airport, has sufficient funds available for the portion of the project that costs. What we're talking about here for fees is to come up with 5% of what you guys are asking for from the feds. We don't even have the 5%. This is a math equation, and it's quite simple. Read the information, come back. Let's do a fishbowl conversation and do this thing right. Adopt the landing fees.
Thank you. And that is everyone on our sign-up sheet. So thank you, and I'm going to close. First call, public invited to be heard. And we are going to take a break, at least five minutes. (laughter) We are now at the consent agenda. Would you please read the consent agenda into the record?
Absolutely, Mayor. The second reading and public hearing for the ordinance is introduced on this consent agenda will be held on November 18th, 2025. Item 9A is ordinance 2025-72, a bill for an ordinance to enact by reference the amended City of Longmont Public Improvement Design Standards and Construction Specifications, Section 100, Section 700, and appendices. 9B is ordinance 2025-73, a bill for an ordinance prohibiting the installation and use of gray water treatment works within the City of Longmont pursuant to House Bill 24-1362. Item 9C is ordinance 2025-74, a bill for an ordinance establishing landing, landing fees at the Vance brand municipal airport. 9D are the 2026 budget resolutions. 9D1 is Resolution 2025-58, a resolution amending the financial policies of the City of Longmont for 2026. 9D2 is Resolution 2025-59, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the City of Longmont 2026 Classification and Pay Plan for City Employees. 9E is Resolution 2025-60, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Longmont and the Colorado Department of Transportation for federal and state funding for the Weld County Road 26 multi-use trail from Union Reservoir to Weld County Road 7. 9F is Resolution 2025-61, a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing loans from fund balance in the city's fleet fund to the DDA Construction Fund and the DDA Arts and Entertainment Fund, providing for repayment of the loans from the DDA Tax Increment Income Fund. 9G is Resolution 2025-62, a resolution of the Longmont City Council urging RTD to implement a one-seat ride for Longmont and Lafayette to Denver International Airport. And 9H is approve 10 capital improvement program amendments. And Mayor, I made a note for you there, but staff would like to pull 9C for presentation.
Thank you. Are, do councilors want to pull any other items off of the consent agenda? Counselor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Is that other than 9C?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to pull 9G and 9H, please. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to move the consent agenda minus 9C, 9G, and 9H. Can I have a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Christ. Counselor Christ seconded that. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously? We're now on... The ordinance is on a second reading and public hearing on any matter. The first one is A, it's a bill 2025-53 for an ordinance amending chapters 14.20 and 14.32 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Rates and Regulations Governing Electric Service. Do we have any comments from councilors? I knew you. Counselor Christ.
I'm brief, actually. I, I was asking Mr. Smith about being able to stagger the rate increases because this is a 6.88% increase just for electric, and we're going to talk about waste management fees as well. But, um, apparently we will be having another rate increase next year, potentially. But I do wonder about allowing households to send in manual meter readings. When discussions with Mr. Smith, we were saying that it has to do with gathering information in terms of usage, and so they have to plug in a cable. And he'll correct me if I've said anything wrong here, but it's something that council hasn't decided whether we're actually going to do that kind of rate assessment, so I'm wondering if we could put off raising that extra $10 on manual meters and just let people send in their meter reading to save the expense of it all. So go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Lance Smith. Yes, I did speak with Councilmember Christ about that. So, there is a need for us to know how much energy a customer is using. We do, what I was referring to there was that the meter that is installed on their house still collects this interval data, and we're still able to measure the interval data, understand when they're using the electricity, so that when we do a cost of service study, we can allocate the portion of the costs. So our, our wholesale costs have a demand component and an energy component. That demand component, this meter will allow us to understand how much of the demand is coming from residential customers. So that was, that was what I was referring to there. The, so, I, I, I mean, I think at this point, at some point, we would have to true up the meter regardless. We might not have to do that on a monthly basis, but, um, but we are currently doing it on a monthly basis, and so what I was reflecting is what the cost of doing that on a monthly basis is.
And, and easier for you just to get that real time, so you would prefer to do the meter reading in person, is what you're saying?
Yes.
How far out are we to getting to cost of service rates? I mean, we're just now starting to collect that data from other meters, yes?
Well, so, we're, we are, the cost of service study that was done for the rate increase that we're talking about here didn't use that data because we don't have that data yet. But we did a cost of service study. I think you may be referring to the possibility of having a time of use rate structure so that we have kind of an on-peak period and an off-peak period. I would, in 2026, we are launching our new billing system, and it's generally not a good idea to change the cash register at the same time you're charging, changing the prices. So I want 2026 to be used to get the billing system fully confident, and then potentially in 2027, we could talk about a different rate structure that council might want us to consider.
Okay, so you need that whole year's worth of data to go ahead and make that change? Is that what, is that the support for, for charging more for the meter reading right now?
Well, no, the reason we're asking to increase the cost for the meter reading is because the initial $15 estimate, now that we've, we've actually looked at the cost, we've determined that the cost to read each meter when we have about 300 to 350 customers on the manual meter reading is $25 per month, or $24.65 per month.
Yeah, for someone to go out and read it.
Yes.
Those are all the questions that I have, and it looks like the Mayor Pro Tim has a few questions.
Mayor Pro Tim Hidalgo Ferring.
Thank you, Mayor. So, if we, you know, we, we're pretty much in a point where we should be looking to approve for at least this year. I mean, I know we have the '26, '27, '28. When would be an optimal time as council to discuss any changes to a '27 and '28 if we decide to go with, with a rate change or looking at making some amendments to that? Because I do agree with you that we need to lock with at least that first year to collect the necessary data.
Yes, so, so we've proposed a three-year rate stud, uh, rate increase based on some assumptions about what we think our O and M costs are going to increase, our capital costs are going to increase, and what our wholesale purchase power is going to increase. We do think that purchase power may increase more than what we had assumed, so I would anticipate us coming back sometime in 2026 to talk about further years, 2027 and beyond. And at that time, I think it would be appropriate to talk about that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no more questions from council, I will now open up the public hearing for 2025-53. Is anybody in the public that would like to address this bill? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing for 2025-53 and ask for a motion.
I move, uh, ordinance, uh, 2025-53.
Can I have a second? And that's been made by Counselor McCoy, seconded by Counselor Yarborough. Let's vote. And that passes 6 to 1 with Counselor Christ opposing. The next one on our list is Bill Number 2025-61. It's for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2025. Do we have any questions from counselor or comments from councilors? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing on 2025-61. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing for 2025-61 and ask for a motion.
I move ordinance 2025-61.
Second.
It's been made by Counselor Christ, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Hidalgo Ferring. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously. The second, the third one is a bill 2025-62 for an ordinance amending Chapter 14.12 of the Longmont Municipal Code Concerning Solid Waste Collection and Rates. Is there anybody on council? Counselor Christ.
So, Mr. Smith and I have been talking about this quite extensively, actually, and I believe he's brought a little presentation because, just to clarifying, to some of the comments I made at the pre-session are a little different than I presented them, so we have a nice graphic here to help.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. Lance Smith, Director of Business Enablement. Chris Huffer was, is unable to join me this evening, but I do have August Henderson here to answer specific questions about sanitation services, but I think your questions are mainly around the rate study itself, so I've got a brief presentation here. So, some of these slides you've seen before. This is talking about the general purpose of a rate study. In particular, what's highlighted there in red, ensure, ensure revenues and costs are still aligned for each rate class. So in general, when we do a rate study, we make the assumption that we want each rate class to fully pay the cost of services to that rate class. That's kind of a rate principle, but certainly you, as the policymakers, could direct us to subsidize one rate class with another rate class. And our rate class isn't, isn't just a customer class, so, so for example, residential composting, it's residential customer class, it's composting is the service, so residential composting would be assumed to pay its cost fully. So that's, I, I think I should have made that clear before, that, that, um, that I'm making that assumption, but if you want us to do something different, then, then I need you to give me that direction. So, um, this slide was again presented before. The main thing was to just kind of, kind of highlight the, the fact that we haven't had a rate study done on sanitation for eight years, and that we are facing pressures around cost increases, and in particular, the fleet renewal, where we're behind replacing our trucks. This slide is kind of a summary of the discussion we had on August 8th. Again, we've got those pressures I just talked about. At the August 8th council presentation, we were anticipating having a loan from the fleet fund to spread across seven years, which would allow us to catch up on the fleet replacement. We've since learned that that's, that we're not going to be able to get that internal loan, and so we're going to have to figure out another solution to upgrading the fleet. The line item just below there, composting fees to cover curbside expenses, that's what I was just talking about, a rate class, fully covering the cost of providing services to that rate class. So then, we've talked about the budget in September. So this is slide 49 and slide 50 from that presentation on 916, I believe. So the main things to keep in mind here is the first bullet says revenue flat, and so we're required to assume that the current rate structure is, is what's going to be in place when we're developing next year's budget. Since we didn't have a rate increase, we had to assume that revenues would be flat to what they are in 2025. Those revenues are not sufficient to cover all of the services being provided, so in red, you see the reduced services to match revenue. Those are the services, and I'll talk more about that here on the next slide, but those are services that are currently being provided but are not in the 2026 budget. And then... And then the last bullet is that the intent was if the rate increase was approved, is approved, then we would come back in early 2026 and ask for an appropriation to continue those services that are not funded there. So this slide was Slide 50 in that presentation. I've talked about the $700,000. It's actually $735,000 that we have removed, that was removed from the 2026 budget from costs that were incurred in 2025. I've put some yellow arrows over there on the left to say that if we really, you know, we really ratcheted down the budget and said, well, we're not necessarily going to, to maybe incur all those expenses related to carts, or deferring some maintenance, or maybe we won't collect quite as much trash in landfill. Tipping fees won't increase quite as much as we had anticipated. Those yellow things are kind of budgetary assumptions. What you see in red are actual reductions in services, so that's the shredding, the styrofoam recycling, hard-to-recycle event, event, the curbside branch, the household hazardous waste event, and then grinding and hauling at the recycling center. So I want to be clear, those are services that are not currently in the budget. So really, my conversation with Councilwoman Crist was around the waste management fee, and we, we talked about what services are covered per municipal code in that fee. You can see those listed here. I think the main thing I want to point out here is that these are allowable uses of the waste management fee revenue. That does not mean that the waste management fee is fully covering the cost of these services. So in 2026, we expect the cost of these services to be $8.88 per month if commercial cus, per customer, if commercial customers are contributing. The current waste management fee is $2.96. That's applied in 2025 only to residential, single-family, and multifamily customers. We're proposing in 2026 that that include commercial customers. That would add an additional $166,000 of revenue if council decides not to extend the waste management fee to commercial customers, and we still needed to, still wanted to collect that $166,000 through the waste management fee, we would need to increase the residential waste management fee by 33 cents to $3.29. Then a question's been raised around what commercial customers would get for the waste management fee. The services that you saw on the previous slide are general, community-wide benefits. In addition to that, we talked about allowing commercial customers to participate in shredding events. So currently, residential customers can participate in a shredding event. They can bring up to three boxes of paper to be recycled, and that's free. Every box above that is $7 per box, so that we fully cover the cost of the shredding to take place. Other services that take place at the recycling center are styrofoam recycling, oil and batteries, and yard waste, allowing commercial customers to, to use a recycling center for those. Services would increase the costs, which would either need to be recovered through a higher waste management fee or through the residential solid waste charges. There's also been questions about the composting fee. So initially, the composting fee was set at a rate of $6.60. It was not being subsidized at all. We thought that's what the cost of composting was going to be. In the years since then, at least since 2017, we've had, we've seen increased cost of composting. We've had to add a presorting process that we didn't originally anticipate before we can deliver those materials to the composting facility. The result of all of that being that in 2025, it is expected that compost, curbside composting is going to cost $9.63 per month, which is to say that composting, which originally was not intended to be subsidized, is, currently has a 35% subsidy. So in general, a question's been raised around using rates to drive policy goals, particularly to reduce solid waste by promoting composting. And I should have been clear that, that absent specific direction from policymakers, you, the city council, we're presenting rates that assume that each rate class is fully covering its costs. If city council does want to use rates to drive policy goals, we need to understand which services should be subsidizing which service. And that's, so next steps, I guess I should say. I tried to add some clarity here, hopefully I've done that, but I'm happy to answer your questions. I see kind of two options to move forward here. Either proceed with the rates as approved on first reading for '26 through '28. Option two would be to adopt the ordinances written and direct staff to come back for policy discussions in 2026. So with that, I will turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Mayor Protim Hidalgo Ferring.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm leaning towards option two. I'll just go ahead and say that right now. I think further discussion needs to happen, especially around, for me, the composting issue, and really having that clarity on having our council objectives and our priorities really guide those, those rates. You know, the, the intent is, you know, we want to incentivize composting. We want to incentivize, you know, responsible usage of composting, and, but I understand, you know, the, the fiscal, you know, this balance that we're trying to, to acquire. Where's the money coming if we're dropping the rates? So I feel like that, that is going to require future discussion, and I kind of think when Councilmember Popkin brought it up last time, I think this is what you were addressing. It was very hard to conceptualize. It was like, I needed a PowerPoint presentation, Matthew, next time. And so I, I am going to lean towards option two, but I'm going to let other, other folks weigh in. Thank you for the clarity.
Counselor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck, and thank you, Mayor Protim. Yeah, this, this was the direction I was trying to kind of prompt the conversation with before, so I appreciate you kind of being transparent about that and what the options are. I, I look at the council priorities here, and when, when I look at some of the sustainability targets and goals there, I, I think of rates as a powerful mechanism and structure that we should think about when we are setting policy. Core services is another part of the council priorities, too, and so we want to make sure we're balancing kind of the impacts there and, and, and the cost of service there, but thinking about how we should balance that. I didn't see reflected there in just a cost-of-service level thing. And I, again, there wasn't previous direction to, to your point, Lance. So I would lean towards option two, and I will reserve time to let Councilmember Crist chime in as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance, for bringing all this back. We had talked about option two because I, I wanted to also share with the council that there is a little gift in reviewing it in 2026, which is that the extended producer responsibility credits will be coming, and that may make recycling basically free, just because it'll be covering the expense of recycling. So that will help with our budget, but also, as Mr. Smith pointed out, they need to replace trash trucks in some of their fleet, so, so it's a good time to just discuss it again. And if no one else has any other comments, I'm also in favor of option two, and I would gladly move.
We're not ready for that.
Oh, okay, never mind. We have to have the public hearing.
Exactly. Seeing no one else in the queue for comments on council, I would like to open up the public hearing on 2025-62, and I see Naomi Kurland has signed up. Naomi?
I'm going to turn it on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Peck, Council. I'm Naomi Kurland, and I live at 2073 Goldfinch Court in Longmont. I currently serve as Board Chair for Sustainable Resilient Longmont and lead their Zero Waste Team. According to the executive summary of the first reading, one of the rate study's intentions was to ensure that adequate revenues are generated most equitably across rate classes to meet our costs, and the proposed rate structures were not equitable across, across the rate classes, with composting rates increasing by 50% in 2026 and doubling in the next two years, while all the other proposed rate increases are under 10%. The current composting collection fee was originally set to be significantly lower than the weekly trash rates and comparable to the every-other-week 48-gallon trash rate in order to incentivize composting and divert waste from the landfill. Compost is also only collected every other week, but the proposed increases would result in every-other-week trash service being nearly half the cost of the compost service by 2028. Setting the trash rates significantly lower than composting rates is regressive and disincentivizes composting. We subsidize recycling, and we will be receiving EPR funds to recover, to cover recycling by 2027. We could more effectively meet our waste management services' financial needs by adjusting the proposed waste management fee. Our current waste management fee is extremely low, one of the lowest rates in the front range, less than $3 a month, and that's under $36 a year, with no increase proposed until 2027. By contrast, Loveland's waste management fee is $13 a month, and they divert 58% of their waste from the landfill. Loveland also charges commercial haulers a license fee of $100 per vehicle per year, while Longmont charges 25 per year for the first truck and 15 for additional vehicles. We urge council to consider alternatives to this disproportionate rate increase for composting, such as reassessing the waste management fee proposal and reviewing the fee structures of neighboring municipalities to ensure we are aligning our rates and commercial fees with the greater front-range community while providing residential incentives to meet our waste diversion goals. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Naomi. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address this ordinance? Seeing no one, I now would like to ask for a motion. Counselor Crist.
Yes, and thank you for also referring to the EPR credit, because I think that's going to be a gift in terms of having the ability to reassess our compost rates. And I guess the lesson here is sometimes we do have to subsidize our services just for the general public. So I'm going to move ordinance 2025-62. Oh, option two as well.
Counselor Crist, do you want to know? I'm sorry, not after.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I just wanted to make a couple more points here, building on what Councilmember Crist was just saying. Sometimes we do subsidize services, and that's part of politis, policy decision. We subsidize certain services for certain policy objectives. And in this case, part of the reason I think we're even now having this conversation, and I appreciate it, is because there are real policy objectives that I think we can achieve, and I think many other councilmembers now also are in agreement here in terms of reducing waste, improving soil quality, reducing air pollution, extending, an underappreciated benefit of reducing what goes into a landfill is, is increasing the life of a landfill for longer-term collection, so you don't have to build a second landfill, expand that. And then it supports kind of healthier regenerative agriculture in soils, too. So there's some real benefits from doing this, and, and I think when we think about what kind of policy decision we eventually might make, or the next council would make here, I hope that they consider the benefits that come with, the public benefits that come with that kind of rate structure. Thank you.
Okay. So let's vote. Counselor Crist motioned that we adopt option two for 2025-62, and that was seconded by Counselor Popkin. So let's vote. And that passes unanimously. Our next one is D, which is 2026 Budget Ordinances, and there are five parts to this. So the first one is D1 2025-63, a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the City of Longmont for the, for the year 2025 to pay budgeted expenses for the 2026 fiscal year. Are there any questions or comments from councilors? Counselor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I asked just a question for staff out of ignorance here. A bill like this, is this, is this like pro, is this like a normal routine thing just each year, saying like the city is allowed to collect taxes? Like this is not a particular deviation from normal operations, correct?
No, and if there were a tax increase proposed in the budget, then it would be in the levying ordinance, but we're not proposing that.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that this was like routine. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll open up the public comment for 2025-63. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address levying taxes?
I believe we can hold a public hearing for all of them. We just have to improve them on it?
Let me double-check that with our city attorney.
Mayor and council, you could hold one public hearing for all the budget ordinances if you wanted, then separate votes on each ordinance.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that. All right, let's go to D2. Thank you, Counselor Rodriguez. D2 is 2025-64. It's a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the Longmont Downtown Development District for the year 2025 to pay budgeted expenses of the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for the 2026 fiscal year. D3 is 2025-65, a bill for an ordinance adopting the budget for the City of Longmont for the year 2026. D4 is 2025-66, a bill for an ordinance making appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2026. And D5 is 2025-67. It's a bill for an ordinance amending title of the Longmont Municipal Code on Revenue and Finance by creating the Information Technology Service Fund. Do councilors have any questions or comments? And I see Counselor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. One comment, one question. I guess I'll start with the question first on D5. Harold, we emailed briefly, I emailed briefly with you and other staff today about this, but just wanted to clarify my understanding of the Information Technology Service Fund. So is that a new fundraising, new revenue from the public, or is that pulling, like, I think if I was reading it correctly, it's like pulling from existing department funds to centralize? Can you just explain a little bit more what's happening with that?
I see Teresa Malloy coming down, too.
Yeah, so I think Teresa and I'll tag-team this, so you want to go ahead, and then I'll jump in, Teresa.
You bet. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Teresa Malloy, Chief Financial Officer. So Mayor, Mayor Popkin, this is a new fund.
Not mayor.
Sorry, Councilmember Popkin, this is a new fund that we are creating that will be supported by charges to other funds, departments, divisions that will use the services. So the intent is that, right, right now, our information technology is spread throughout multiple funds in the city, and what our intent is, is to consolidate that in one fund. Hopefully, we'll we'll achieve some efficiencies this way. And to fund those expenses, we are going to charge the other funds associated fees to cover those costs. So it's going to be an internal service fund, and the revenue will come from the other operating funds of the city.
So those fees don't get like passed on to residents and re-payers? That's just like how we administratively charge other departments, because otherwise they'd be buying those IT services and products. Is that correct?
That is correct. It is very similar to our fleet internal service fund. That is a centrally managed fund by our fleet department. So they do the purchasing for all of our fleet. They do the repair and maintenance for all the fleet. And then we charge back fees to the users of those fleet.
So by centralizing this, does that increase like economy of scale of services and equipment, too?
Yes.
Okay, so that sounds like a nice improvement there to the system there.
So operationally, the operational component behind that, we were getting pretty clear-eyed on that. But also, a lot of times when you're looking at technology and what we're doing within the organization, what we were seeing, or what I was seeing in the budget process, is that you would have multiple departments requesting technology. And in the budget process, we were actually bringing them together at that point. What it's going to do is put those requests into this technology fund, so that we're evaluating it on an organizational basis versus a department and division, which lets us get economy of scale, but actually lets us create some operational efficiencies by linking departments into one system versus having different systems. And then that reduces the operating costs from our technology group, because they're not managing as many products.
Got it. Great.
And I would also add, Councilmember Popkin, that what is included in our 2026 budget for this new fund is just the tip of the iceberg. So it's related to our new sales force system that we are implementing. The rest of the IT stuff is still decentralized, and our goal is to eventually have all of that centralized into this one fund over time.
Gotcha. Well, thank you for that. Thank you for that clarification. It seems like a great move to start to pull that all together. And just thank you for all of the time that you've put in over the last few months, if not the whole year, in not only doing your job, but really preparing this budget. I know many people are here tonight because of the airport-specific component discussion tonight, but there are so many different pieces to the city's, what, $520 million budget. And appreciate all of the work and late nights that you and many other folks here have put in. Appreciate it.
Counselor Christ.
Teresa, don't run away, please. She's not listening to me at all. Come right on down. So I have a simple question. This is kind of like the administrative transfer fee, yes, where you portion it out for...
Yeah, yeah. You can use that as an analogy. Correct, yes.
Okay. So will there be any waiver of fees, for instance, like with the administrative transfer fee? I'm reading that 100% of the fee is waived for the downtown development fund and 50% for the airport fund. Would we be doing the same thing with the technology?
No, no, that is not our intent. Our intent is, since this is in a separate fund, we really do need to recover the true costs of the fund, yeah. The administrative transfer fee is the fee that is charged by the general fund to those other funds for all of the general support that the city attorney's office, the city manager's office financed due, supporting those other funds. And since it's in the general fund, a sales tax, sales tax, and property tax-supported fund, we have other revenue sources, so council can make the decision to waive administrative transfer fees or reduce them.
So you're answering my next question, which is where is the, where is this fund going to be for information technology? It's not going to be in the general fund?
No, it is a completely unique and separate fund, much like our enterprise funds are.
That's what I was going to ask. It's going to be in the enterprise. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Seeing no one else in the queue, I now will open up the public hearing for any of the 2026 budget ordinances. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address one or more of these ordinances? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for individual votes. The first one, I am sorry, an individual motion. The first one is D1 2025-63. It's been moved by Counselor McCoy, seconded by Counselor Chris. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously. The next one is 2025-64. Can I have a motion, please?
I move ordinance 2025-64.
It's been moved by Counselor Chris, seconded by Counselor McCoy. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. The third one is 2025-65. This is the ordinance for adopting the budget for the city of Longmont for the year 2026. Can I have a motion, please? It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Hidalgo Ferring, seconded by Counselor Chris. Let's vote. That carries unanimously. The fifth one is 2025-67. This... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. 66. This is for the expenses and liabilities of the city for 2026. It's moved by Counselor McCoy, seconded by Counselor Chris. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously. The last one is 2025-67. This is the one creating the Information Technology Service Fund. It's been moved by Counselor Popkin, seconded by Counselor Yarborough. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now at E, which is 2025-68. It's a bill for an ordinance amending the 15, I'm sorry, amending Title 15 of the Longmont Municipal Code Concerning New Recycling Facilities and Uses. Counselor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I just had a clarification for staff on this. This was before my time here, and I'm just curious as to the why this was directed and kind of what this is addressing.
Good evening, Mayor Peck, members of council. Zach Blazek, Senior Environmental Planner, planning and development services. Council gave this direction a little over a year ago. It was in response to a couple of different customers who wanted to come in with various commercial uses that were not permitted within certain zone districts, and council directed us in response to expand on what our definitions are. Great. Thank you.
Seeing no other councilors in the queue, I will open up the public hearing on 2025-68 on recycling, new recycling facilities and uses. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move 2025-68.
It's been, the motion was made by Counselor Chris, seconded by Counselor Popkin. Let's vote. The next one that we have, this passes unanimously. And the next one we have is 2025-71. This is a bill for an ordinance approving an economic incentive agreement with Micron Technology Incorporated. Counselor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Harold, we also emailed about this briefly. Really interesting opportunity here, and I think I just wanted to better understand. So it's a, it's a $1 million economic incentive that the city is providing, and so I wanted to understand just the kind of ROI proposition. Like what is the city getting? What's the region getting for this?
So we do have Kelly Sage from our partner, Longmont Economic Development Partnership, and we also, and I dropped a name.
Russ Woodbury.
Here from Micron to, they have a brief presentation, and we'll be happy to provide it.
Fantastic. Let's do the presentation. Thank you.
All right. All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Kelly Sage. I'm the president of Longmont Economic Development Partnership. I'm joined by Russ Woodbury, the site director for Longmont's Design Center. We're here on second reading for your consideration of business personal property tax incentive. The recommended incentive is for a 75% rebate of business personal property tax for years one through four, 50% rebate for years five through eight with a cap of $1 million. The incentive is performance-based, based on actual equipment purchased, and the creation of at least 20 jobs at $140,000 average pay annually. There's a requirement of the retention of 243 jobs over the course of this eight-year term, and if jobs fall short, there is a calculation in the contract that reduces the rebate. Micron intends to invest, well, I know this is very conservative, over $212 million into this expansion, and Russ is here to tell us a little more about Micron's investment here in Longmont. Now I may need help on this part.
Thank you, Kelly, for the introduction. Thank you, Mayor Peck, and councilmembers for your time this evening. As Kelly mentioned, my name is Russ Woodbury. I lead our Longmont facility. I'm here as your community partner to share our Micron expansion, which we dubbed the Longmont Megalab, which strengthens local jobs and helps power the technologies residents depend upon every day. Let me start with who we are and what this expansion means for Longmont. Staying on this title slide, Micron's a global leader in memory and storage, core ingredients for modern computing. Tonight, I'll show you how our Longmont Megalab increases our capacity to develop, test, and qualify storage solutions for U.S. customers, all right here in Longmont. I'll also touch on our community engagement and why this work matters for local prosperity and U.S. technology leadership. Next slide, please. Right here? All right, thank you. All right. So this is Micron at a glance. It's really to give you a sense for the scale of the company. We are global. You can see some of the main figures up there. And really, the point of this slide is just to underpin that we are a stable investment and have, are making long-term commitments, which includes the facility that we're doing here in Longmont. And this is to support U.S. customers and also innovations here at home. This slide is more specific to our U.S. investments. And again, I won't, actually, there's probably a lot here. Maybe I should walk through some of this. We were founded in Boise in 1978. We employ about 10,000 high-tech workers across the U.S. We have roughly $30 billion, $35 billion a year in annual U.S. revenue. We are the single American manufacturer of advanced memory, and we have a clear leadership in this technology with a patent portfolio of 59,000-plus. We are also the largest investor in U.S. semiconductor manufacturing. We're doing $150 billion over the next decade. You may have heard about some of this in the press. And then also, we have about a $50 billion expenditure in R&amp;D, and we are expecting to create more than 90,000 new U.S. jobs. That's across the country. Also, Micron Memory is foundational to the AI revolution. So every, you guys have heard about Nvidia and some of what's going on there. Every one of those processors uses 96 of our high-bandwidth memory chips. That memory can represent up to 50% of the AI service cost. That demand is growing aggressively along with the storage that underpins it, and this is powering data centers, PCs, smartphones, critical infrastructure, and advanced defense. We operate in 10 U.S. locations. You can see them on the map. And in particular, you can see Longmont as one of the pins on Colorado. This is our flagship U.S. site for storage product development. You can think of modern computing as a memory storage pyramid. These are all different technologies that we do within Micron, HBM at the top, down to the storage tiers at the bottom. Out of our Longmont facility, we are designing the performance and capacity SSDs and bringing those products to market. That's the foundation of this storage pyramid. The Megalab expansion adds specialized test environments we need to qualify next-generation SSDs that U.S. customers are deploying across cloud, enterprise, and edge applications. We are expanding our facility. This is a picture of the front of the new building. Our products from this site are qualified and used by leading U.S. providers like HP, NetApp, Dell, AWS, Microsoft Meta. We are building out approximately 60,000 square feet of data center-grade lab space, as well as a total expansion of around 200,000 square feet. The project includes at least $212 million in capital investment, 20 net new jobs, and the average annual wage of $140,000. As customer demand grows, this lab's capacity gives Longmont the scale we need to validate more platforms in parallel, shortening time deployment for our U.S. customers. This is a little bit more about the site. This wheel is kind of the core group that does product development. The message here is really that our site is vertically integrated. We have every one of the technologies and functions represented to bring these products to market. So that's supported by patent generation, hardware validation labs, customer labs, large firmware teams, customer qualification and support, systems engineering, and the core NAND technology development. Our workforce draws from the highly diverse backgrounds across the storage industry, which is part of how we got here to Longmont, Colorado. When a U.S. cloud or server provider needs a new storage solution, our Longmont teams build, test, and qualify it end-to-end so that their platforms are faster, more reliable, and ready to scale. This is our history in Longmont. We've been here for 15 years. The gray is before my time. The purple is since I've been here as site lead, and the green is just around the corner. I won't read through all the bullets, but really, the point here is next year, we will finish out this new facility and our new data center lab space. And this represents a big investment the company's making, and again, underpins the point that Longmont is not a new bet. It is a sustained multi-year commitment that we're making in this region. And then, lastly, community engagement. So we believe being a strong employer means being a strong neighbor. Since 2020, Micron Gives Foundation has contributed roughly $200,000 to organizations serving Longmont. Our employees, volunteer hours, and charitable giving also get matched by Micron, which amplifies the impact they have. Actually, today, we just celebrated our 47th anniversary and are doing 47 days of giving. And so we've actually had a whole string of projects around the community over the months of October into November, like Habitat for Humanity, Garden Grows, Wind to Water, some other things along those lines. So as we grow, we'll keep partnering with local nonprofits, schools, workforce programs, and ensure that Longmont residents benefit from this expansion. And really, in closing, Micron's Megalab brings high-wage jobs, a pipeline for future roles, significant private sector investment, and a nationally strategic capability in memory and storage that underpins AI, data centers, and critical infrastructure. And it's all built and validated right here in Longmont. Thank you for your time, and can I answer any questions?
Any questions?
Just a couple of follow-ups there. Thank you. It was Russ, right?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Thanks for sticking it out a little bit late tonight.
Of course, of course.
And thank you for your investment in Longmont. I'm curious, what made you guys originally choose, I know this is before your time on that timeline, but what made you choose to invest in Longmont the first time, and why are you staying?
Yeah, so the initial investment was the first box on that 15-year plan I showed, the acquisition of Storage Genetics IP. And so it was a startup here in Longmont that specialized in storage technology, and we got some of our IP that we've used in the NAND space from that acquisition. So that came, became the seed of the organization, of the facility here. And then, of course, this region has a big history of storage. You've got Seagate and SanDisk and just a whole bunch of different companies, and we have pulled from that talented, trained pool of people to help staff out the jobs for Micron.
Great. Thank you for that. Thank you for all the charitable giving to the community as well.
Yeah.
Am I correct, Harold, that this $1 million economic incentive will yield about $46 million to the region? Is that what I saw on the...
Correct. And so when we, when we evaluate...
Correct. And so when we, when we evaluate these projects, one of the things that we look at is really what's the return? And so that's an approximate 10-year tax benefit, not just to the city of Longmont, but to Boulder County, St. Rain Valley School District, and all of the taxing entities. And when we talk about looking at this, you know, we, we have implants off where we run it through it. This is where we talk about indication. We pull back a little bit because it also shows you what is the potential of spending. And I think, you know, for us and having this conversation was really being a community that can say you have Micron's Megalab. The mayor and I met with some officials. And what that really does for a community and, you know, associated with this is there's also, we can't guarantee this will happen. But it's not uncommon to see other businesses wanting to co-locate or be adjacent to based on other potential opportunities. And so
Kind of a shared regional advantage.
There's a lot of things that we're looking at this. And so it was, this was a little different than what the community is used to seeing. It's not like we were bringing a company in. We were retaining
Sure.
a company that's been here for a long period of time and incentivizing the expansion.
Right.
And it's really that, it's the equipment that they're buying that really actually supports our general fund, our public safety fund, our open space fund, our transportation fund that we were looking at. And they're stable.
Yeah. Thank you. Last question, Russ. Did I see on the slide that you have 59,000 patents?
And growing, yeah.
That wasn't a typo?
No.
More power to you.
It's a technology company.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Christ.
Thank you for keeping Longmont on an innovative edge. We so appreciate you here in town.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else with questions, thank you very much for the presentation and very excited about this.
Okay. I might, can I make a parting comment? I don't know the rules of order.
Of course.
Okay. I'd also just take a moment to appreciate the city, the services we've worked with. We've actually, are already operating a part of these labs that was built upon our need and how to do the roadmap, all through code and everything, of course. But you guys have been wonderful to work with, so thank you.
That's good to hear.
Yeah. If I turn this on.
Thank you. Okay, let me see. We need to go. Yeah. So now that there are no more questions or comments from council, I'd like to open up the public hearing on 2025-71, the incentive agreement with Micron Technology. Is anybody in the public want to address this bill? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Oh, second.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy, seconded by Mayor Pro Tame Hidalgo Ferrey. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously. We are now at items removed from the consent agenda. The first one was C, and I removed that one. This is about the Vance brand landing fees at Vance brand. Before we get started, I know that Sandy Cedar has a short presentation. But I would like to. Here we go. I would like to make some comments if you don't mind, Sandy, before. To the people in the airport community, thank you very much for coming out, first of all. It's very, you're very passionate. I appreciate that. I want to give some background a little bit for those of you that haven't been here. And for those of you that say that we have been doing nothing at the airport. Because I've been working on this issue for nine years, insisting on cameras after death of some pilots at our airport, the misuse of airport land by a business resulting in lawsuits that, some of which we've won, most of them. And after the 2020 pandemic ended, we started on the needed infrastructure to bring businesses to the airport relying on grants, both state and federal. At a council meeting in the spring of 2025, we were told at a council meeting that there were no vendors in Colorado collecting landing fees. These, three of the counselors up here questioned that and looked into it. I personally looked into it and asked staff to help with that. But money through all these grants is very expensive. Money's not cheap. You have to buy it. This city has to have matching funds for the grants regardless, regardless of what the grant is for. And we, we don't have it. The chair, no, this isn't what I wanted to say. We've heard for the public for over a year, a public invited to be heard about the airport traffic. But this ordinance is not about airport traffic or noise. It's about GA Airport having the right to add landing and other fees without FAA's approval per the 1996 Federal Regulation 31994, which states, "The FAA does not approve or disapprove airport fees." "The agency role is to determine whether such fees are consistent with applicable federal law and policy, only, only if they're challenged." The city can implement the landing fees at any time. And for me, our airport is not a gem, a gem. It's rundown with old, tired buildings, no viewing area for residents, and a food truck for a restaurant. The landing fees will give the city the local match funds to apply for grant dollars for an FBO building, purchase hangars, upgrade for electric aviation, attract aeronautical businesses. And that is what I am going after the landing fees for, for matching funds so that we can get these grants. We are doing a lot of infrastructure work now, but we are running out of money. So this is a way that we can legally get funds for matching funds for grants. I'll turn it over to you, Levi. Sure. One more comment.
Well, I also want to stress that this has not been, to the mayor's point, this has not been jammed through and that we've done this very methodically. And nothing in this ordinance at this stage, and I just want to make sure that folks understand, at the consent agenda stage, it's just the first reading. There's a lot of things that can happen in the second reading. And, and that second reading, based on what I see here, is a process of going back and massaging it even further and getting more specifics and getting a lot more input. So I find, I'm very resentful of one of the speakers coming up here and somehow conveying that there is a, being jammed through. That is just simply disingenuous and not true. And I want to make that clear, that what we're doing here is a process, and that process takes time. And unfortunately, when you're dealing with government, you're going to take some time to do this. So I just don't want that sort of narrative that is just not even part of the process to be out there. It's not the way this works. So please, understand that as we go through this, oftentimes, people just, you might not even like the things on first reading, but you go ahead and move them forward so you can actually get to the meat of the problem. So those folks that are trying to suggest that there's a dollar amount or anything else like that, they're just not being honest with the general public. And the ones that are ratcheting up folks, that's not being honest either.
It's yours, Levi.
All right. Mayor Peck, City Council, Levi Brown, I'm the manager of Vance Brand Airport. And I and Sandy Cedar have a quick little presentation for you about Vance Brand Airport with a focus on landing fees tonight. All right. First, kind of a quick before overview of regulatory framework. This is kind of in general, and then we'll get to landing fees specifically. Federal law regulates many airport operations, including flight pass, aircraft noise, flight safety, and pre-imp local authority in these areas. By accepting federal grant funds, the city agrees to several grant assurances, including making the airport available for the public to use in reasonable terms and without unjust discrimination. Some of the things that we can do and have done in the past is implement voluntary noise abatement procedures and implement voluntary flight patterns. Landing fees specifically, landing fees can be legally permissible but cannot unjustly discriminate in their application. Landing fees need to be justified by costs and expenses related to the airport. Finance predicts approximately a $420,000 annual needed to fully fund airport operations, CIP administrative transfer fee, and pay for the landing fee services. If the ATF transfer fee was maintained, that would be $230,000 annually. And there will be more details on finances. This is just kind of a quick overview. Right. Council direction on landing fees. In December, Mayor Peck made a motion to direct staff to come up with a landing fee schedule to defray airport construction and maintenance costs at Vance Brand Airport. In May of 2025, the city passed a motion for more information to be gathered and presented regarding airport operations in the June 3 meeting, which included options for landing fees, flight pass, lease terms, and unleaded fuel. Tonight, staff is bringing back an ordinance that would enact landing fees without specific fees or charges. If approved after council gives fee direction and after consultation with the FAA, any changes to the fees and charges would flow, follow the process outlined in the code, back to the Airport Advisory Board, and then be posted for 30 days prior to returning to City Council for a final vote. Simultaneously, staff will issue an official RFP for landing fee administrative services. We got a little bit of background on other airports in Colorado that have had landing fees. This is information that you've seen before. This is kind of a little quick review. We've got Slayda, Pagosa Springs, Rifle, and Buena Vista. These are other comparable GA airports. I won't go through the details of this. It is worth pointing out that their fee structure starts at 10,000 pounds is where their fee structures start. At our airport, a number of landings, 2024 by weight, aircraft over 20,000 pounds, there were 12, 12,500 pounds, 19,999, there was 157. And the remainder of those aircraft were either not captured or aircraft up to 12,499 pounds, pergrantual of 58,991 landings at our airport last year. And with that, we'll move into more details of the finances, which I'll hand over to Sandy.
Thanks, Levi. Mayor Peck, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to go over the finances as well as the different options around landing fees that are available to you. It's really important, the last line that Levi just said, as Councilmember McCoy mentioned, this is quite a process. So today, the ordinance that you are seeing is just establishing landing fees without any dollars associated. Once you decide if you're going to continue to move forward, then you decide what kind of methodology you'd like to see. We'll talk about that next. And then we'll bring those back as part of the rates and charges update. So that's a different ordinance that would require a 30-day posting period, review again of the Airport Advisory Board, and then back to council. So I just wanted to point out that even though you could establish landing fees today with this ordinance and a second reading on November 18th, that doesn't necessarily finish the rates and charges piece. It is, you know, as Councilmember McCoy said, quite a process. So let's talk a little bit about the finances. I'm going to remind you, you may remember, from the budget presentations, this is the airport. See if I can get rid of this giant thing. Don't show the ribbon. Okay.
There you go.
So this is the airport pro forma that we showed you during the budget season. And we talked a little bit about how even though revenues and expenditures are able to balance each other out, and that's important to note, the revenues and the expenditures do balance each other out as far as regular operating expenses. Down here, though, that you don't see is anything in here for capital improvements. And so as the mayor was mentioning, when we do get different grants, they do require a match, and the matches are not budgeted as part of this pro forma. So the daily operating revenues and expenditures do cover, do cover until you get to actual capital maintenance and any kind of additional work that you might want to do at the airport. Also, this little red line down here shows that even then, you're still pulling a little bit from your piggy bank, a little bit from your fund balance that you're pulling every year, even, even under this pro forma, where things are pretty much balanced. I think this is important because things like maintenance around plowing and mowing and conferences and those kinds of things, those things are balanced. It is when we are talking about the capital funds that things begin to go a little bit different. So I'm showing you this one, which is a little bit different than what the Airport Advisory Board saw, primarily because of some of their questions. In the city's financial software, anything that is not like a utility fee or some sort of revenue that is across many funds is considered miscellaneous category. Well, for the airport, that's everything. So our budget team was able to pull this back out. Thanks, Sandra, so much for the help to really show you what does this really mean. This is your hangar fees. This is your flowage fee. These are the FBO lease, et cetera. So she was able to break that out a little more. And then you'll see down here, these are the grants that are anticipated. So you see them in the revenue. You also see them down here in the expenditure side. So then what's missing is what is the capital match from the city? When you include the capital match and you net out the revenues and the expenditures from the grants, then we start to see some problems in 2029, where the fund begins to not be able to pay for the grants. So what ends up happening is that you can't accept the grants if you don't have the match for them. And so I wanted to make sure people understood this particular spreadsheet because it's heavy. There's a lot of information here. But essentially, what happens is over a few years, you'll no longer be able to afford the match in order to get the grants. And the match is 5% in many cases, so it's like one of the best grants out there. Okay. So what kind of projects are we talking about? So Harold asked me to bring up the capital projects. I know this is real tiny print. But Harold asked me to bring up what are the kinds of capital projects that we've done at the airport? And I think what you'll notice in this list, you know, constructing taxiways, improving the access road, rehabilitate aprons. I mean, for the most part, these are things that you do to maintain overall operations in the airport. Not a whole lot of moving forward, although there's been some pretty, I mean, I think, once upon a time, there was what, no water service or something?
Yeah, so I think, so I think the reason we're putting this is I had some questions from council about what have, what has been done at the airport. And so this was a sense of showing you all what we've done, I think, since 2000. And, you know, one of the things that I can see, that you can see is really kind of, there wasn't a lot from 2000 to 2010, but from 2010 to 2024, you're definitely seeing more, seeing more projects come into play. I actually was talking to Dale today, who, when he was with the organization, he took the airport in from, I think it was Phil Delvecchio who was there. And so some things that they were seeing is there was only a two-inch water line serving the airport at the time, so they had to expand that. But I think what you're, you're kind of seeing in this is basic things like we had to do perimeter fencing in 2013. And what you're seeing in these grants are, this is just really core infrastructure work that's had to be put in place in this, in the airport. And to Sandy's point, what you're doing when you're balancing the fund is you're using what's in the fund balance to contribute to the match. And so that's, that's really when there's questions about what more can you get? We're trying to manage, you know, the grants, the, the non-discretionary grants that we get in order to make some of these core infrastructure improvements.
The other thing I'd point out is the amount of grants that has been, have been received from the federal and the state agencies for these different projects is pretty significant. Okay. Another kind of a small piece. So I just showed you the expenditures for the, for the airport. I also showed you what it looks like when you start to increase the capital line and where that delta starts to look at. The estimate from our budget office is that if you were to say the airport must pay 100% of the admin transfer fees, that's not your fiscal policy today, but 100%, then on average, you would need to raise revenues $440,000 a year annually to be able to cover all the things and the 100% of the admin transfer fee. If you decided that you wanted to continue the 50% policy, then $230,000 is your target. Sorry, $420,000 or $230,000 is your target. So if you kept it the same So if you kept it the same and said, we're going to only require 50% of the admin transfer fees be paid, which is the current policy, fiscal policy, then really what you're looking for is about $230,000 annually to be able to pull together the match money. So we put together a bunch of different options, some of these were based on the very first airport advisory board recommendations, which you may remember was no landing fees, but if you had to, there are some scenarios that they gave you. So we kind of put this together, the first set of scenarios are for only aircraft that are 12,500 pounds and above. So these are larger flights, larger planes. The first option is, for example, $5 per 1,000 pounds per landing, no exemptions. That would yield you about $13,956 a year. If you decided to do the same thing and those with hangar leases had a 50% fee waiver, for example, that would yield you about $12,000, and so on. You could exempt hangar leases. And then the next set are, okay, what if you did it for every airplane based on weight? So regardless of what weight they were, $5 per 1,000 pounds per landing, no exemptions, that really changes that dial to a little over $2 million. Now that assumes that the airport traffic would be the same, and of course, there are no guarantees on that either. But that does seem like a lot more than the goal, the target goal that you're looking for. Uniform fee of $5 per 1,000 pounds per landing, you could also do a fee waiver of 50% for hangar leases or exempt them. The third set of options there are flat fees. So a $7 flat fee with that kind of 100% ATF, you're going for that $420,000 with no exemptions or hangar leases exempt, or if you kept with your current financial policy of 50%, $4 flat fee, no exemptions, or hangar fees exempt. And that shows you kind of what you would be able to generate generally. And I can go back and I can show you what those look like, with all the different options, but it was suggested to me that maybe a summary is a better idea. So these are the methodologies that we're looking at, we can come back to this as we continue. But this is the general idea of how you want to structure those fees if you decide that you want to move forward with landing fees. Okay, so the administrative challenges around this. So as the mayor mentioned, there was some conjecture around, is there anybody that could even administer this? Because I certainly don't think that we want Levi out there counting planes. I don't think Levi wants that either. So I asked our purchasing and contracts folks to put out a request for information, what companies are out there that could do this kind of administrative landing fee? And there were three companies that replied to the RFI. And basically, at that time, all three had really solid methodologies, they were all slightly different, they had slightly different fee structures, but essentially used more than one data point to determine who the plane was and multiple ways that people could pay their landing fees, whether that was scanning a QR code or getting something mailed to them or however that would work. Since that time, one of those companies has notified us that they are indeed going to be getting out of this business, and so they withdrew their RFI. But there's still two that were interested. If the council decided to move forward, we would turn that into an official RFP process in order to solicit somebody to do the service. It's important to know that the FAA has allowed pilots to make registration information private, which does restrict the city's access to that information, but when we asked that in the RFI, the responders indicated that they could still figure out which plane was which and be able to charge people. Finally, there is pending legislation, there's a couple of different pieces of pending legislation about making the ADS-B data unavailable for revenue generation. For the most part, pilots are still required to be ADS-B equipped, and that legislation has not, it just hasn't passed at this time. It does sit out there, but it's not the case today. We took this information to the airport advisory board, and Longmont Municipal Code Chapter 2.94 states that they have the power to review and recommend to city council actions concerning lease rates and fees. They had a very long three-and-a-half-hour meeting as well, lots of public invited to be heard, and so some of the concerns were brought up around not having enough data on airports that have landing fees, what the effects would be on the small businesses, not only at the airport, but frequented by people who come to the airport, and a need to take a broader look at overall revenues. The airport advisory board has reviewed the proposal, recommends no landing fees be implemented. Just to make sure that I'm really clear with what the board said, I believe you got a letter from Melinda, who's the chair of the airport advisory board. I'm only going to read a little bit of this, but I want to make sure that it's in the record because this is the actual official recommendation from the airport advisory board. It says, "The airport advisory board maintains that the motivation behind the proposed implementation of landing fees is not primarily rooted in addressing budget constraints or safety, but instead an attempt to deter and impede air traffic at Vance Brand Airport. Whereas the public input and feedback indicates that this fee proposal has been prompted by a miniscule number of airport adversaries rather than demonstrated fiscal need or any patterned safety issues, whereas the intent of using the fees to restrict activities clear, prohibited, and sends a dangerous precedent for the future development and utility of the airport, which is a vital regional asset. Whereas the city of Longmont has failed to conduct comprehensive cost-benefit analysis and exploration of alternative industry-standard methods for generating revenue, including but not limited to initiating formal rates and charges study to ensure all airport service charges are market-adjusted and appropriate, increasing fuel flowage fees, a direct usage fee, increasing tie-down fees and hangar lease rates, hangar development, pursuit of electric charging, and no lead fuel provision to increase sales income." Just as a reminder, the city council did also ask for ideas for additional revenue generation. Therefore, the Longmont Advisory Board only rejects any form of landing fees at this time until all other financially viable and less restrictive revenue generating methods have been thoroughly studied, evaluated, implemented, and exhausted. The motion passed six to one with one member dissenting, Charles Schilling. So, I don't know about you, but I believe you all received about 125 emails over the last 24 to 48 hours about this topic. Levi and I went through and read them all and have done a summary of what the public input was based on the emails that you all read, in case you didn't get to all of them. And so I went ahead and put this together as, you know, those who were against landing fees really felt, and you've heard it tonight, that it would make pilot training more expensive and harder for students to access, the financial burden of flying would decrease the traffic and affect businesses and the economic impact overall, and that there are better ways to increase revenues. Those who were for landing fees, some of them did say that they would deter so much airport traffic, but just as a reminder, that's not a reason why you can implement landing fees. Pilots from other airports should pay to play in Longmont, that's the golf course and recreation center kind of analogy. Airport would be financially self-sufficient, less taxpayer funds, and the airport is a business and pilots are customers, landing fees would charge for customer use.
And I would like to say that I also tracked these, and 82 of them were not from Longmont, some as far away as Bellevue, Washington, North Carolina. So I'm sure they have an opinion on what Longmont should do, but they don't really make policy here.
I didn't notice that part, thank you. Okay, finally, before discussion, I just want to make a couple of additional clarifications. I told you last Tuesday that we would be applying for the CDOT unleaded fuel grant. We tried very hard to apply, but as it turns out, the unleaded fuel grant through CDOT is only for infrastructure. It is not for planning, it is not for engineering, it is not for mediation, those are the things that we were planning to apply for. And so CDOT actually said that because we already offer unleaded fuel and because we weren't ready to put something into the ground, that they encouraged us to apply next year. Does that seem accurate, Levi? Levi's the one that talked to them. The other piece that I mentioned at the last meeting was around barometric pressure. I indicated that some of the flight trackers that people have residentially that won't locate their airplane location correctly because of the barometric pressure issue, turns out it's not exactly location, it's altitude. So the altitude of a plane may be here, but a flight tracker may be showing it down here if it's not taking into account the barometric pressure. So I wanted to make sure that I was transparent about that difference. And then finally, an interesting thing came up at the airport advisory board with respect to unleaded fuel. Two of the three types of fuel sold at the airport are unleaded, and that makes up 41% of the sales today. Yeah. Okay, so council direction on landing fees, do you want to implement landing fees? If so, what's the fee methodology that you want to use? And are there any exemptions that you want to give outside of military or medical? Because that's what's currently written in the ordinance.
Also in the ordinance, isn't it written that fee-based, I'm sorry, hangar-based were exempt? Didn't we?
It's not in the current ordinance, but you could add that. Currently, the only exemption is for military and medical.
Yes.
Emergency, yeah, an emergency, thanks Chris.
Yeah. Can you go back to that slide and let's look and see what it says?
Let's see here, do you want me to pull up the...
The exemptions.
The possible exemptions.
Yes.
Okay, so those are the different fee options, and you could say that, and you could...
Hangar leases exempt.
Yeah, and I think, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong on this, you could exempt things in the fees and charges rather than in the ordinance itself, or you could ask to change the ordinance for the next second reading if you decided you did want to exempt hangar leases.
Okay. Let me call on, who's here? Counselor McCoy. Whoops. Well, go ahead, Counselor Popkin.
Mr. Trump, okay. Thank you, Mayor Peck, thank you Sandy. Really appreciate that, I know you've been adding this to your plate over the last few months and there's a lot of information here. I just wanted to add a little bit more commentary to the AAB meeting from last week as the council liaison for that, before we get into deeper discussion. So I think you did a nice job of summarizing kind of what the decision was, it was a six to one vote recommending against landing fees. I wanted to note that AAB did distinguish between landing fees and special event tie-down fees. AAB did not make a recommendation on special event fees at this time, so I just wanted to let council know that. AAB did not examine different landing fee options, we looked at only, or the board ended up looking only at one base case that was presented by staff and did not look at other options for the point of discussion. Discussion then ensued on other ways to generate revenue for the airport. There was not a discussion about different degrees or fee structures that could be put in place. Many members did feel like it was premature to consider landing fees for financial reasons because other strategies, as we've heard from public comments tonight and via email, were not explored, or and/or other risks of landing fees might deter uses in other ways, including reduced business spending, fewer aircraft visiting and paying tie-down fees and fuel fees, and reduced jobs based at Vance Brand Airport. The one nay vote specifically flagged that there was not clear data presented on the airports that have implemented landing fees and how that's working to date. There were a lot of other suggestions as to how to generate revenue, but I think we heard a lot of those tonight, so I won't rehash that. And then I did want to just note a couple of process comments, some of which were expressed at the AAB meeting and some of which are my own observation. One, I do want to note that the budget discussion, as we're seeing some of this for the first time tonight, the budget information, and we've seen some of the budget information before, but the budget information was not included in the AAB packet beyond kind of very high-level numbers, and it was largely presented for the first time to AAB on last Thursday. And because of the timing, that was when council basically expected them to advise on landing fees in the same day. So I just wanted to acknowledge that in the process, there's a lot of information to digest and to try to grapple with there. None of the scenarios here were presented, or the different iterations in spreadsheet were presented to AAB in advance in their packet either. And then board members and members of the public also shared concerns about timing and the moving up of this city council meeting to discuss this topic tonight. My understanding, and though others can correct me if I'm wrong, is that there was just some attendance issues at the November 3 meeting, and that because this was on first reading, it wasn't changing the public hearing date, but I'll let others clarify that if I'm wrong there.
We wouldn't have had a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, for November 3, okay. And then...
Maybe. Not a full council.
You wouldn't have had a full council, and we needed a full council.
Thank you for clarifying that. And then what I wanted to do, what I also wanted to just note, building on Mayor Peck's comments, is I've also received a lot of emails, probably more than 125, because some weren't logged in the system fully, all the council, in the past week about this. A majority of those emails opposing landing fees were from individuals not based in Longmont. From my tracking, all of those in favor of landing fees were from people who did live in Longmont. So all that to say is I actually really do appreciate the 30-plus speakers who did come out today, who clearly are, because you're only allowed to speak if you are a resident in Longmont, so thank you for coming out today. You could have been doing other things, like watching World Series Game Four, which in case you're wondering, I think this final score was six to two, Blue Jays. And so I just wanted to note a few of those kind of context additions to the AAB meeting from last week as we inform council discussion. Thank you.
Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Sandy, when we look at the one option here of a uniform fee of $5 per 1,000 pounds per landing, hangar lease is exempt, does that mean also like businesses that have hangers, like the jump plane and a school that has a hangar and that sort of thing? That's what we're talking about there, too?
Yes, that would mean that if they have a hangar lease with the Vance Brand Airport, that they would be exempt from the landing fees.
So wouldn't that also potentially raise the number of potential hangers because it'd make it a positive, I mean, just the market itself kind of drives that in the sense that people would be like, you know, if that's a savings, we would encourage that sort of development and growth on the airport for that. We'd also be able to meet some of these expectations that we heard voiced tonight in regards to this idea of how do we bring this up to the 21st century standards that people are expecting? You know, and if that's what people are expecting, you know, I just got, I had the golf board last night, and they're expected to cover their costs. And Yoot Creek was able to bring in some extra revenue to put into the fund balance to, then over the next couple of years, they're going to keep collecting it, collecting it, and collecting it so that they can cover an upgrade of their sprinkler system, which all golf courses do upgrades of their sprinkler system, just like this. So this concept of this sort of saying that we haven't done anything, we can see from the budgetary aspects, we've done what we can, and what that hangar lease exempt that we're talking about here of $2,116,292, if that were the level that we're looking at, it would not affect any of these, like the school, because those are the hangers. It would affect folks that are coming in here and doing that. And though we don't know that that would maintain there, we expect that from every other activity in the city of Longmont, as one of the speakers spoke about tonight. I just don't understand that, now, I guess my question is, why the $5? Is that to, is that arbitrary? Could it be three? Could it be...
Absolutely. I mean, let me...
So we're not stuck on that dollar until we see what...
We were kind of basing that on what the other general aviation airports are charging. Now, of course, they're exempting all airplanes that are under 10,000 pounds or in some cases 12,500 pounds, but I believe it was just used here. It could be, I mean, it's your methodology.
It could be $3, whatever it is.
And we could run...
And so when we look at something like the golf board does dynamic fee implementation in regards to how it deals with things, we could have a dynamic fee implementation to a certain degree where we say it's $3 here, but as we start to see the increase so that we can, you know, meet the expectations of the community in regards to these upgrades and other things like that, we could do that in this situation, too. I mean, every year, we could revisit this to make sure that we had that sort of flexibility. Am I missing something there?
I think you're right in that. The only thing that I would say is that the FAA requires for things to be nondiscriminatory and, you know... and, you know, kind of across the board. So whatever methodology we would choose, we would go back to the FAA before we go anywhere else for consultation.
So you could start off low at $2 fee for landing fees and then move from there to, with the exemption of hangar leases, and then move to a $3 fee with the cost of, of things potentially going up, you know, hitting that right sweet spot for, or making sure that we don't lose the traffic that, that is normal for an airport this size, but not, you know, overburdening the airport either, right? Okay, so.
Yeah, as far as whether that would be a burden, that would certainly be, you know, more, there would be more public comment during that 30-day, you know, posting period, but essentially, the methodology, that's what we're asking you for.
Potentially, so, I mean, I guess that's kind of where I'm at, where it doesn't have to be a specific $5.
These are just examples.
But, and that's where I, that's kind of where I would come in with support on that, that particular one, uniform fee of whatever we find is the sweet spot, 1,000 pounds per landing and hangar lease exemption. So if anybody's asking.
I think on the dynamic pricing, that would be one we'd want to reach out to our outside legal counsel on because I just think that's a question, there's not clear guidance. We didn't need to get some input.
I amended it. But not a clear example.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. First of all, just a quick question. Why wasn't this information included in the council packet?
As far as the different options?
There's really no information in the council packet, so.
That's true, yeah.
So I was wondering why.
I think we were still working on some of it, and I apologize, we should have had it all in the council packet ahead of time.
Okay. Because I'm finding it very problematic to make any kind of decision on this, based on a few different things. First of all, I think that the projected revenue, based on the assumption of the same amount of activity, might not be accurate. We've heard a lot of, I mean, anecdotal testimony that there'd likely be a significant decline in activity should we pass some, some landing fees. And so it's hard to trust those numbers on revenue generation based on any of the options provided. I also would say that I think trying to analyze this as a revenue generation tool in a vacuum, based on all the other considerations that were presented to us by AAB, as well as obviously a bunch of testimony we heard tonight, I think some of them made legitimate sense to explore in the very near term, such as hangar lease fees. As we heard, hangar space is in high demand. And so I know that generally, our methodology has been sticking that lease fee right in the middle of kind of our regional airports. And maybe not going to the top of that range, but increasing it a bit could help generate fees, things like that. And so I find trying to make this decision without including a bunch of other concepts in revenue generation difficult, especially with kind of, again, some of the assumptions made for the financial forecasting. So I just am not prepared to make any sort of decision on passing an ordinance tonight that isn't specific, doesn't have specific, specific details about whatever the council majority would decide is the preferred landing package, landing fee package. Just passing a vague blanket landing fees ordinance to me is inappropriate, so I will not be supporting an ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Yabro.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. It is a little bit challenging. I mean, I definitely am not opposed to a landing fee, but it is, I know I can't make a decision tonight as far as it $5, how much weight, or, you know, anything like that. And also, we were expecting more options, too, from the airport advisory board to hear back what other options that we could utilize. Listening to public invited to be heard, there were so many things, and I know we can't be discriminatory, and I know that we have to go back to FAA and ask these questions. Like, is there a possibility we could maybe supplement or waive some of the student fees, 18 and younger, you know, for the landing fees, something like that? I kind of like the idea. I know we have our own advisory board, but I like the idea of creating the airport authority. You know, we all know that there is a shortage of pilots in the United States, actually globally, there's a shortage. Looking at the different options of increase of hangers, you know, Councilman Rodriguez already mentioned that, and fuel tax, and, you know, everybody kept bringing up about Greeley Airport, Greeley, Greeley, Greeley. I understand all of that about Greeley. We know they have a really nice airport, but it takes money. It takes money. So everything costs, but I think we need to come up with something, you know, having more community input. It would have been nice in December 2024 or the beginning of the year if we had more people coming in and saying, hey, here's some options, or more people attending the advisory. I know we have some consistent people who were coming here that do have hangers, were saying, you know, we need to have more renovation at the airport, we need to update the airport, but we all know that it costs money. The mayor has said over and over again, we need to have a, update the master plan. Where that $500,000 coming from? Do y'all know? Because we don't have it, but we need it. So there has to be a balance, some meet us halfway with something. You all, everybody had a good, good points tonight, and I agree with Councilmember Rodriguez that it's really hard for us to say, yeah, let's have some, I'm not opposed to landing fees, I'm telling you that now, but I can't make a decision on how much, what weight. You know, I think we need to have more information as to what we can do as far as with the FAA, for one. And for two, those who have imposed these landing fees, how long have, you know, how long have they done it? How successful have they been? So I just feel like there's a little bit more information we need to, to get before we give you a number and say yes, you know. But I'm not opposed to it, but I do think there are other options that we can put forth, and I definitely do not want to miss out on the opportunity for our youth. It's so, so important that they stay involved. I want to make sure that they stay involved, and if we have to waive some fees for our youth landing fees for those who are in school, that our residents of the city of Longmont, I think that's something we need to look into as well. That's me.
Great. Counselor, Mayor Portim, Hidalgo Ferring.
Thank you, Mayor. No, and I agree with Councilmember Yabro, especially in regard to student and youth, you know, I'm thinking under the age of 21, really, just, but, you know, I guess my concern is then that, does that put us in a discriminatory bracket that we are allowing some and others know? So, you know, and again, I, I am in favor of landing fees, and the reason why is, you know, for a lot of the reasons that I've heard residents say, you know, I'm, I'm knocking on doors and, you know, my knuckles through the thousands of doors that I've hit. And, you know, I hear it over and over again from our residents that we need this money. We are very lean, and, you know, we are coming into economic uncertainty, but we have some core services that we need to take care of. What I want to see is, I want to see four firefighters on a fire truck, not three. You know, those are the things that we need to be funding. And I value the airport, and I really want to look at all the options we can as a, as a money generation, generator. You know, and I'm going to take some ownership, too. You know, staff is only presenting what we've told them to present, what we've told them to collect. So if we're not clear in exactly what we want them to bring back, we're not going to get the full picture. So, you know, I want to look at other options, looking at, what is it? I had to write, write this stuff down because I'm learning terminology here. So, you know, the tie-down, hangar rentals, or even just the hangar leases, you know, of course, a lot of that, you know, we have to have money to make money. So how do, what, what are some other options that we can look at around fuel sales and encouraging different fee structures for, for users of the airport? And what can we do to coordinate with our Longmont Economic Development Partnership to get more businesses in those spaces? So looking at the whole gamut, not just landing fees as well, is what I would, I would like to look at, as well as bringing back other municipalities who have implemented landing fees. What's happening there? What's, what are they, you know, was there a drop in usage? And how much of a deficit? Is it even worth pursuing for us? So, so we can make a really well-rounded, well-informed decision. Does that help? Okay, good. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Christ.
Well, what was helpful today is on our consent agenda, D1 was our adopted financial policies. And so in reading through that, I want to point out that the recreation fees are established to obtain at least 80% of self-support, so they're not expected to, to achieve 100%. Oh, I know, they have, they have their own, they have their own, yeah. Yeah. And what is interesting to me is that also, if you're a non-resident, you are expected to pay an additional 25% non-resident fee. For the senior citizen activity, they are expected to recover 100% of their expenditures, but if you are a non-resident or under the age of 55, you will pay an additional 20% for all programs. I bring this out because if that's some of our policies, then that might not be discriminatory when we apply it to the airport. I do have a question. Okay, so some of these on Slide 9 mention 100% ATF, which is the administrative transfer fee, I'm guessing, or 50%. And it seems to be working, in what way? Are you saying that the airport is providing 100% administrative transfer fee? Or it's receiving 100% administrative transfer fee?
Mayor Peck, Councilmember Christ, I think the idea, the basis that we first started discussing this was that the airport become 100% self-sufficient. If they were 100% self-sufficient, then they would pay for 100% of their admin transfer fees. The current financial policy is that they only pay for 50% of those back to the general fund, and that's why we were showing both options.
Okay. So the numbers seem to be working in the wrong direction.
The, the flat fees are different. So if you take a look at what, the way that those were determined was by taking the either $230,000 or $420,000, depending on which methodology. So if you're trying to raise $420,000 annually in general, over a 10-year period, you would want to implement a $7 flat fee, and that would include paying 100% of the admin transfer fees. If you were trying to raise $230,000, that would result in about, it's like $3.91, but I rounded it up to a $4 flat fee, and that would assume that you're continuing your current financial policy of 50% franchise fees. So depending on how much you're trying to raise determines the methodology there.
I see. I see. I do have, I want to agree with a couple of the comments in that I think we get a little attached to our solutions before we've actually figured out exactly what problem we're solving and also other solutions that are available. And the master plan would most likely help with that, but of course, we're kind of reverse engineering this, in other words, coming up with some ideas that might actually inform the master plan in this case. I don't, just based on our current financial policies, I don't know that full self-sufficiency was expected for the airport up to now, because other, other, like, as to McCoy's conversation and Council McCoy's conversation about the golf course, they are expected to cover their costs and then some. But for the airport, it's always been 50% financed, so up to now, our policy has been to subsidize it. I agree also, we need a little more experience with what other airports are, what the results are using landing fees. And then I have a different concern, which is Sundance is coming here, and there will be some fly-ins, and I, my concern is I don't want this to seem like we're trying to gouge the Sundance people, because that was a concern and one of the reasons why they left Park City. So just the timing of that, I think we need to be careful. And so something that is maybe more in line with what the AAB suggested might be softer in that arena. So, agree, I don't have enough information to make a decision tonight, but thanks for this information, because I also kept looking through the packet going, am I missing an attachment somewhere? Where are the numbers? So.
Mayor, I want to provide some clarification to the budget and the financial policies. So recreation is general, is a general fund-supported division, of which they're supposed to recover 80% of their cost.
Right.
So think of recreation like children, youth, and family services, but within the general fund, we have a cost recovery component of that. But they, they have historically received general fund dollars. When we talk about the golf fund, the airport fund, they are enterprise funds, which then under fund accounting within our system is, they have to collect enough revenue to support all of their activities. And so there's some nuances, I just wanted to, to make sure everyone in the audience and everyone watching kind of understood in terms of how we look at the budget piece of this. So there are sections within the general fund of which we do require them to recover some of their costs. So in the senior services group, it's not senior service operations, it's, I think, the trips that they take or the activities that they take, where they have that piece on it. And so I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, that's correct. It's an activity fee for senior, seniors. Hey, while you're mentioning that, the reserve policy is changing for the airport also, but I don't see it in the contemporary policies, the ones that we're, that we're looking at.
Yeah, so what's happening in this is, this was something that, that we saw that actually gave me some, a bit of some anxiety, because the way that the airport fund has been managed, and probably in perpetuity, is that they have a fund balance there, but then we're using the fund balance to also fund capital expenditures, which, if you're really going to look at your fund balance and, and try to figure out capital expenditures, then you're going to need to set a reserve, and it needs to be an operating reserve, because similar to what we talked about with you all as you're wearing your Housing Authority hat, is same thing. We were using the fund balance for some capital expenditures. You need to make sure that you have enough operating reserve to maintain at least, in my mind, 90 days of operating expenses, because, and it's slightly different than some of the other funds when we look at it. So to give you a comparison, when we talked about the electric fund, and the analogy I look at is when we had the flood, the flood, we never really stopped collecting revenue because there were areas of the community that weren't impacted. This is a small enough geographic boundary that it is feasible to have a significant weather event or something where there could be so much damage to the location that you're not collecting any revenue in that. And so if you're looking at the capital expenditure piece, then I, my advice would be is that you do need some kind of 90-day fund balance reserve to handle those operating expenses.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but do you want to make a motion, please?
Yeah. Let me, let me just.
I gotta interrupt.
No, we're interrupting?
No, let me just say one thing to her. I agree with the. I agree with the policy. I just wanted to point out that it isn't in the policies that we passed tonight. And so maybe you might want to add the airport.
I have to turn you off.
So I move that we extend the meeting past 11 o'clock.
Second.
You guys stop talking.
I know.
No, this clock is the right clock.
What? No, it's not.
Matthew, councilors, McCoy and Popkin.
Yes.
You've both, you've both talked on this subject. So, let's make it really, really...
We got to vote first on extending the meeting.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right. I move, you already moved, it was seconded, let's vote. And that passes unanimously. Now I am back to councilors. You've both... Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
So, correct, this wasn't in the city's financial policies, but we didn't talk about it in the budgeting process, like we did the other policies. This is something that, so it's not funded. This is something that we need council direction on. Yes, you can add the financial policy, correct.
Counselor Popkin, with your comments, would you please tell us what you want to do, in any direction you want staff to have?
Sure, thank you. To be clear, my first set of comments was just reporting back from the AAB, just so that council could have that clarity. I largely did not offer more specific questions or comments from my perspective. Overall, I'm open to all legal means of increasing revenue for the airport. And I've heard a lot of different options that seem valid. And I also share some of Councilmember Rodriguez's concerns that he shared as well about kind of how we're, the incomplete information that we're considering tonight. I have a clarifying question for Sandy and Levi here. When we talk about exemptions for hangar owners, does that include all based pilots? Is, what's the Venn diagram there?
And how that's kind of broken down will depend, of course, upon council direction.
If we said all hangar, like, all hangar leases exempt, does that include every single pilot who is based here?
An often-used term in lieu of that is based aircraft is exempt. So that's another way of thinking.
So based aircraft then reflexively would include anyone with a hangar lease too?
Yeah, theoretically, yes. I suppose it's technically possible that they could have a hangar without an current airplavinate, but yes, indeed.
Okay. I think, I think a big, a big thing that I think, that, a big concern that I have, that I, I look at these numbers and I share some skepticism of like, what's worth, like, what's worth anchoring towards? Because I think it's, you know, a price signal is a price signal. And in basic economics, like, that does change behavior. Like, that does shift behavior. So I would like to know what assumption, like, I guess I would like to know how we can account for changes of behavior as a result of that price signal. And in terms of either reduced traffic or departing businesses, if we don't exempt anyone who's based here, so that we can make that decision knowing those, at least some semblance of impact there. So we understand the sense of scale that we're talking about. It could be meaningful, it could be minute. I don't, I don't know the answer, and that's why, like, we're, I think there's some concern there.
Is that a direction?
Yes.
Would you like?
That is, I would like to make sure that, yes. And I will express my preference, that is, if this is going to move forward, I would like to exempt all based aircraft, or, and hangars, if for some reason those are not mutually inclusive. As also direction, or at least inclination from my side, if we're going to move forward with that. It seems very clear that the biggest budget line item is hangar leases. And like, not even close, like, order of magnitude compared to everything else. So I guess what I would like to know is, we do have more land there. And so what type of hangar construction and planning are we doing? Whether it's the city investing in that, or whether we are enabling the private sector to do that? That seems like the most surefire, consistent, year-over-year way of generating sustained revenue for us. Or, I guess, in addition, I mean, this would be consistent too. But like, that is currently our most sustained revenue source.
So, so a couple of things. This goes back into your capital expenses. So, some of the projects that were on the list that we presented actually showed where we put water and wastewater in. So A, where do you have to develop, is the first question.
Sure.
I will tell you that the infrastructure on the north, A, the north side's pretty full. But the bigger problem on the north side is that it's really a haphazard infrastructure that moving infrastructure through there is a problem. So then you look to the south side of the airport. So some of the projects that we funded were bringing water and wastewater to the south side of the airport. So that was a piece of the puzzle. Another project that we had to fund was actually a stormwater study for the south side of the airport to understand what you need to do to manage your stormwater, both, and your water quality in that process. So that just got completed. The last piece of the puzzle that we actually need, there's electricity. And that is probably the most expensive infrastructure to put in. And so having the funds to pay for that is the next challenge that you have to go into to facilitate the development of that. Now, somebody could theoretically say they want to build a hangar, and they're willing to pay for the electric infrastructure to be brought in. We have the ability to negotiate those rates, based on them fronting the expense. That's an opportunity we can look at. One of the opportunities that I've talked to council about in this is, we know that we need to add additional capacity from a, from a substation perspective. The airport could give property to LPC for no cost. And then, in exchange for that, LPC could run the electric infrastructure. Now, from the fund accounting standpoint, we're going to have to establish what value is for the land versus what the cost is of the infrastructure to then make it out. So that's a big piece on the south side, is just finishing the infrastructure. In addition to that, then you have other infrastructure costs in terms of taxiways and things. And so we're getting back to the financial challenge that exists in having the revenue. So I think, yes, those are options. Then, when you, when you look at it, and now I'm talking just about other airports. Where you make your money as an airport is if you own the hangars, and you're actually not just collecting a ground lease. That's where airports make a lot of their money. And so that is something that we've thought about in terms of, and there are FAA grants to construct hangars, but you need the infrastructure in place to then construct the hangar. So you're starting to see this, this cycle that we're getting into in terms of the need for money.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I'll offer one more question on direction, or comment on direction, which is, I would love to know, I think we're understanding now from the RFI, like, how collection work. What I would love to know is, how is that enforced? And so, like, I would love that information back. You don't have to answer that right now, but that would be information that I would find helpful. But if you do know...
Yeah, I think, I think we do, Mayor Peck and Councilmember Popkin. You know, the other thing I would just mention is you also gave us direction to bring back modified lease terms. And the way that we're looking at that, the direction that you gave me kind of to finish up Harold's conversation was that we would be looking for longer lease terms for investments. So if people wanted to invest in the airport, the scenario that Harold talked about, that we would be willing to maybe do longer leases. So that will come back to council next, that's the next piece of that. But to answer your question, I don't know that we have any enforcement mechanisms, because only the FAA can enforce air traffic.
Okay, thank you. So last question I'll just leave with here, like, I keep, like, I've gone from zero to whatever number I'm at now in understanding airport issues this year, because I've been in the liaison for the airport board. And I keep wondering, how did we get to this point? And, you know, we have a 2011 airport master plan. And I think some of the very real challenges that we're, the tensions that we're feeling in the community, the frustrations that people in this room are feeling right now, is that there hasn't, we don't have a modern airport. It's not serving modern community needs. And so I guess I would love to know, when was the last time that modernizing the airport was a council priority?
Councilmember Popkin, I actually helped to facilitate the 2011 airport master plan. And it was a great process. I mean, I think we brought together an awful lot of folks. At the same time, we had some of the same concerns with people who were, you know, concerned about airport operations in their neighborhoods as well. And so we facilitated some conversations between neighbors and pilots, and, you know, had a, had a very robust community involvement process that ended up in that master plan, so.
So would your very polite answer then to my question be about 14 years ago?
I would certainly say that there was genuine interest in 2011.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So, that was an interesting experience for me, because when they presented it to council, I was actually in attendance at the meeting, but not as the city manager. It was the week before I actually started. And I think that meeting went really, really late as well. And, you know, one of the big things that was focused on was kind of the runway extension, of which you heard. And the biggest challenge in that was then acquiring the land for the runway extension. And again, what were you seeing, is you were really seeing the financial issues coming into play. More complexity because than it is in Boulder County, and there's some other issues. But I think the overriding issue has been financial. At least since I've been here, is really just financially. What money do you have available within the airport fund to fund some of these things?
Okay, Counselor McCoy.
So, this is a consent agenda item. We, are we tabling it?
We don't have a motion yet.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, I think we've gotten a lot of direction here. And, you know, and I personally think we don't have a specific uniform fee, you know, and I think that you guys are flexible, that you can come up with several options. And so, you know, I still stand true to the uniform fee of blank dollars per thousand pounds per landing. And as Levi described, tie-downs and hangar leases exempt. But we've wasted a lot of people's time here if we're not going to move something forward and get at least this, so that we could have the true discussion about what those numbers look like, with maybe some data collected. So my motion is to move the, with, with the direction that you have, Sandy and Levi. I move consent agenda item.
9C. I'll second that. With, but we need direction as well with...
Yeah, we need clarity.
You need clarity.
I'm not sure what that direction is.
So, so that, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. More discussion, can we go fast? Mayor Protem Hidalgo Ferrey.
Well, I just want to add that, you know, as, if we're going to add on to really look at landing fees, but actually have the company come in and explain their work model and their process, can we do that?
Mayor Peck and Councilmember, or Mayor Peck and Mayor Protem Hidalgo Ferrey, that is, the bids are sealed at this point until we actually finish a process. And so we can't, unfortunately, we can't bring them in, you know, because we have to finish the RFI process, then go through an RFI process. Once that's completed, then you can take a look at that. But, you know, I can certainly tell you that the methodologies were similar, they seemed reasonable. You know. And I would say on the direction piece, I certainly heard a lot, I heard a lot of more information that people needed. But yeah, I don't, I don't think I heard exactly a direction for which methodology you either want to employ, or do you want to do a larger study? I heard larger studies more impact, you know, could we check things with FAA, tie-down fees, fuel sales? So yeah, I heard a lot of things that I...
And outcomes of what's happening in other municipalities.
Yeah, I could certainly... So what I heard was to explore with the FAA things like student exemptions, that we would want to bring back methodology, have a hangar lease, to look into the Greeley Airport, to determine with the FAA's input whether we could do different kinds of pricing, or whether we could exempt leases, those fixed base aircraft. Check the other airports that have landing fees, and see whether they've been successful, and how long they've had them. Look at all the different options, maybe more of a revenue study, overall revenue study for the airport, including looking at things like tie-down fees, fuel sales, a general fee structure. And making sure that we don't gouge the Sundance people. Okay.
So I do have a question. Is there a way for you to, for staff to tell us how many hangars? What is the cost of a hangar? Because I like the idea that the city owns these and we lease them.
The cost of a hangar, that's a big, wide variety. Are we talking T-hangers, we're talking just the size for a single aircraft? Are we talking? Okay.
Or a business.
Yeah, currently, hangars are going anywhere on the airfield, and just thinking about value of current hangars, from $100,000 to, you know, hundreds, up to million dollars. So there's significant structures to construct, yeah.
So, again, to purchase those is, would be another loan, grant. Or to build them, whatever, whatever works. I don't know anything about hangars. So, what I was wondering if we could bring back, but not necessarily on second reading, is the amount, the amount of hangars that you could possibly fit on that.
Yeah, we have that with...
Oh, you do?
That is in the ALP, in terms of some hangar, some land use, some maps. That basically have commercial, and then it has, it has different sizes of hangars. I think the challenge is for us is, I'm hearing a couple of things right now. I'm hearing, we want to see all of this information that is, that is beyond this. You know, the direction leading into this was landing fees. But we have these other components that we're looking at, which I think gets to, what are we bringing back? Because if we're going to look at this, then it's almost indicating that we're not bringing this back. But if you want to bring this back, then what are, I mean, again, I need some clarity.
You're confused as well, I am. So what we want you to bring back is everything that is pertinent to landing fees. Period. Whether that is more information, you wanted more information.
She has the list.
Okay. You got it? Okay. All right, we're good to go, so let's vote. You're not satisfied? But are these...
I don't know what the motion is.
Well, the motion was to pass 9C.
To adopt landing, landing fee, okay.
But, but not with any specific information in them. No rates, no fees, nothing. But just the ability to adopt them.
Okay, so adopting the ordinance, which basically establishes landing fees with the exemption of military emergency, and whatever the other one was I said, I forgot. Yeah. And then bring back all of this information as you determine the methodology. You're not ready to bring, you're not ready to set the methodology.
We are not.
Pass the ordinance, and bring back all of this information.
Correct.
In order to help determine...
The methodology.
Mayor and council, Chris Robby, Assistant City Attorney. Just to clarify, this is like a, procedurally, it's a two-step process. So if the city were to adopt landing fees, there would be the establishment ordinance, which is before you. It would also, the actual fees and other exemptions could also be in the scheduled rates and charges, which council would adopt the resolution. That would also have to go back to the AAB. So I just want to clarify, it is a two-step process. This is the establishment ordinance, the scheduled rate and charges would later implement the actual fee amounts.
Yes. And, you know, I think one of the things that I heard... Yes. And, you know, I think one of the things that I heard in the list was to take a look at kind of the, the overall rates and charges.
Yes.
Study, right? So this, I mean, we probably can't bring back all of this information in a week or two, but, I mean, it sounds like what you're looking for is to see the overall picture. Establish the landing fees today, the ordinance, and then take a look at the overall picture of all of the revenues, which may take longer. I just want to be clear.
I just want to clarify something for my own sake, because I heard the reading back for nine C as written, but I thought I heard from virtually everyone here to exempt hangar leases and based aircraft. Is that not an update? I mean, that would have to be technically an amendment to this if we're going to do that. So I guess that technically wasn't your motion?
Well, I'll wait for legal counsel to...
Mayor, council, Chris Robby, Assistant City Attorney, the current exemptions for the ordinance are military, medical, and emergency operations, which I believe was council's direction in June to specifically exempt those. If I recall, the direction in June was to look at local base hangar exemptions.
Sure.
So those are not included, that is not included in the ordinance. I think the intent was to also consult with FAA. So, you know, I, these were the exemptions as written, and then potentially further exemptions could be in the scheduled rates and charges after that consultation with FAA code. However, the city could amend the ordinance to include further exemptions. That could be included before second reading.
Right, thank you. So then I just wanted to clarify with Councilmember McCoy that currently you were planning to move the motion, like your motion was to advance the nine C as is, without any update on the based aircraft or hangar leases that we were, that I heard from most people discussing.
No, I was, I, I think that I was trying to be flexible and move this forward. We have people in the audience that have other business to attend to with the city.
Right.
But...
That's fine. I mean, I guess we can amend it at a future date, but we also have people here have been waiting to see what decision we make on this.
Yeah. I think we were trying to...
Can you back up one more?
Okay, so my, my intent was just to move this forward with the recommendations that we, or the concepts that we were, that we had described, that you had described earlier, Sandy, to make, get these issues that seem to be obstacles kind of hammered out.
Okay, so just so...
I heard everybody say that they weren't, or most everybody say that they weren't against landing fees. They just wanted a more, hammered out some of the more specific details. And that's where we can do that in the future.
I appreciate that. So just so I am clear and everyone else is clear here, your motion was to advance nine C with all of the feedback that's basically been provided from council to be incorporated at some point in the future, somewhere between now and second reading and beyond if it's specifically on rates.
Are you fine with that, Mayor? As a second?
Like, because this is, you would be moving this...
If you're going to move nine C, let's just move nine C.
Move nine C.
As written.
As written.
And then we gave direction for them to bring it back. Our assistant city manager said they cannot do that in two weeks before second reading. So let's just advance it tonight and then work with, with Sandy on how the rest of that comes back.
Because the fixed base aircraft could be exempted in the ordinance itself, or we could check on it with the FAA and bring it back as part of the rates and charges.
Exactly.
That's what I heard from City Attorney.
Let's wait and see.
Okay.
So I'm going to...
That's the process for those that are left, just so you know.
I'm calling the question. We moved, we moved the ordinance as written. We gave, we gave direction to staff on other things that we wanted to bring back. They will bring that back with the rate, the methodology. And then we can put that back into the ordinance on second reading. We don't know at this point the information that they're going to bring back. So we're just saying, we, the ordinance just says that we want to put in landing fees with no methodology in it yet.
For me, that doesn't make sense until we get all the information and then...
It's okay, you voted against it.
I know, but I was, that doesn't solve anything. I'm still asking a question, that's what I'm saying. I thought that we were gonna like...
I voted against it because I thought that what we were trying to do was make sure everything was done at one time. We, you know, I don't, I don't want to feel like we're just like really, that's the whole point. All these people were saying, they felt like we were pushing this through. And I don't want it to be like, that's what we're doing, just trying to push it through. I wanted to make sure that everyone is clear, and it still doesn't sound like we are all clear on what we're doing. I know we're, you're right, I didn't vote for it, but I wanted to make sure that everything we, all the information we brought forward, that it would be asked all at the same time. Because you still have to, after they go, when they go to the FAA, they need to ask all of this at one time, not just to prove this and then come back and go back and amend, and amend. Let's do it all at one time. And then pass, because then we know what we can do and what we can't do, what's discriminatory and what isn't. Then we can pass the ordinance.
Would you go to the FAA before the second reading? No?
Probably not.
And that's...
Hold on. I don't know at this point what we would ask them other than...
Exactly.
Is there landing fees? It's kind of why we were trying to get some direction to get more focused on what the conversation would be with the FAA.
Yeah, not there. No, and that's what's going to allow us to do that, correct?
So we, we didn't have enough information or knowledge about the landing fees to be able to say anything definitive, which is why the methodology is not in the ordinance at this point.
So I think part of the challenge that we've run into is really a time challenge.
Yes.
In that there were a series of things that led to, you know, the advisory board meeting being delayed, coming in, you know, we were planning on coming to the third, not having a full council in the third, knowing that the second reading is on the 18th because the challenge is from a time perspective, and then all of a sudden you're going to overlap two councils. And so I think what we're trying to do is to say, do you want the landing fee? What is the general methodology based on previous council direction on this one? I think what's happened today is that other options have been introduced to, to the conversation. So then, similar to when we look at our rates and charges that we went through on, on electric and on sanitation, is everything starts changing numerically. If we say there's a $480,000 gap, or let's say we say it's a million dollar gap, the number that we're going to be looking at would be, if it was just landing fees, it would be something similar to what Sandy has on, on the chart here. If it's landing fees, lease rates, then what you're going to do is then take those numbers and you're going to look at what's the appropriate allocation. So then the numbers will start moving again based on that information. That's kind of, I think, from a staff perspective, the challenge, and the only direction we have had up until this point is landing fees.
Uh huh.
And hangar leases. And so we're working through those pieces that we need to move through. So just knowing that the timing and what we're going to bring back to you all, that, that's going to press us.
So to your point, we should only be voting on hangar leases with, on this, not on any other revenue sources, because this, this is just about landing fees, I don't mean hangar leases, just on landing fees. I'm getting really tired. Any other source of revenue can be brought up again at a later date. You, we can do many sources of revenue, but not all at the same time. We don't have to do that. This meeting, this council meeting was about landing fees only. So looking at other sources of revenue can be done at a later date.
So there's a point of parliamentary procedure here. What Councilmember McCoy just passed, or motioned and council just passed, was moving this from first reading to second reading. And so then there are, I hear some concerns from my colleagues here, and then if there are elements of this kind of foundational ordinance that we want to amend at second reading, which is the normal process, we can consider that on, what is it, the 18th of November, to then provide that clarity of direction, if any, from there. Because right now, the ordinance has not passed. It just moved from first reading to second reading.
Right.
And so like, just for everyone's clarity in the room and watching, this is now moving to second reading because it has not been enacted yet, and it has not been amended at this point. There's been some information that's been presented. I hear from my colleagues and I feel myself that at a minimum, there should be some updates to this before it moves forward to make sure that staff are clear on what they're implementing. And that seems like the appropriate time in the process to do that. So I just want, like, from a parliamentary procedure standpoint, in terms of what we just did and what we're working towards.
We're moving it towards second.
That's, that's the process we're currently following. And I, and I, please correct me if I have a misunderstanding there, but I wanted to make sure that myself, my peers here, and the public are clear on what just happened and what we're working towards.
That's precisely...
Thank you.
So this motion passed five to four, four to three, with Counselor Yarborough, Chris, and Rodriguez opposing. Thank you, everyone. Well, it's already, it was, it voted and it passed.
Yes, it was a procedural question.
What?
It was a procedural question.
Okay. So Levi, how confused are you? Yes, we're going to take a five-minute break. We are back, and we have two more consent agenda items. They are G and H pulled by you? By Counselor Popkin.
Thank you. I'll be quick, just a couple of quick clarifications here. I was confused with the language of one-seat ride. What does that mean in this context?
Can I explain that?
Sure.
Okay.
Anyone?
It, it basically means that you do not get off of the bus until you reach your destination. For example, the destination of the end stop of the bus. There's not going to be any getting in and off in Lafayette. And it's just a one-seat ride. You stay on the bus. One seat, no transfers.
Yeah, I get that. I'm just wondering why we're specifying that in the resolution. Like, for instance, if I wanted to get on in Longmont and just get off in Lafayette, because that was the most convenient time, could I?
This is to the airport.
I know, but if it's stopping in Lafayette to pick people up, couldn't I get off?
No, not on this bus.
I mean, you're going to pay airport price.
Sure. If I didn't have a car or needed to get there, yeah.
You know what? RTD knows exactly what we're talking about.
Okay, okay, as long as, all right, that's fine. I'm just, like, I could do that with the Boulder one. And then I'm just curious on why Lafayette is mentioned specifically? Like, was that a, is that a conversation that's actively happening with the city there?
Yes, and that is what our RTD director asked us to put in there to stop at Lafayette.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know. With that, seeing no other mics, I will move to pass Resolution 2025-62.
It's been moved by Counselor Popkin, seconded by Counselor McCoy, to put, to pass nine G. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. The next one, yours too, Counselor?
It is, because I want to make sure Ward Two is not losing a bunch of park funding. In the CIP amendments here, a lot of funding is moving from multiple other parks, I won't name them all, but like, three or four other parks, to Sandstone Ranch Community Park. And so I just wanted to clarify, Harold, like, what's happening there? And like, is that shortchanging other investments?
There was an email exchange on this, too. That's savings that we've had from other projects through the BVA process that we were using to where they're moving.
BVA, meaning the best value approach?
Right.
Uh-huh. So, it's savings from other park projects that are complete?
Yes.
That we're transferring those savings to actually invest in another park that's not complete yet?
I want to make sure that I'm, yeah, so we saved the money at Fox Meadows Park, which was in the Park Improvement Fund of Sandstone, and then Salcover Basin, 153 that we're moving. So, yes, that's the process.
That's all I wanted to check on. Seeing no other mics, I will move to approve item H.
It's been moved by Counselor Popkin, seconded by Counselor Chris, to move nine H. Let's vote. I see the Macy group waiting. That passes unanimously.
Oh, but we're not there yet. We have our General Improvement District.
I move that we recess as the Longmont City Council and convene as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District One.
Second.
So, on our General Improvement District. Oh, yes, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. So, on our agenda for the General Improvement District are 2026 budget resolutions. The first one is R.LGID 2025-02, a resolution fixing and levying taxes on the real and personal property within the Longmont General Improvement District Number One for the year 2025, to pay budgeted expenses of the district for the 2026 fiscal year. Are there any questions from council? May I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Popkin, seconded by Mayor Protim Hidalgo Ferring. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. The next one is R.LGID 2025-03, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One, adopting the annual budget for the district for the fiscal year 2006. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, can I have a motion? Don't you dare. It was, it was moved by Counselor Chris, seconded by Counselor Yarborough. Let's vote. Getting slap happy over there. That passes unanimously. I move to adjourn as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One and reconvene as the Longmont City Council. It was? Seconded by Counselor Popkin. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. We are now at the continuation of the residences at Alta Vida riparian setback variance. I'm sorry, this has taken so long. I am. We are ready. Thank you. Thank you for presenting again.
Good evening, Mayor Peck, members of council. Zach Blazek, Senior Environmental Planner, Planning and Development Services. This item was continued from the August 26th meeting. The applicant requested a second continuance, so we're here this evening to resume that discussion. Right now, I believe the hearing is closed. So, it would take a vote from the council to resume that discussion.
Counsel Popkin?
Yeah, sorry, Zach, a point of clarification here. It would take a vote of council to resume the discussion or to resume the public hearing?
Resume the public hearing. You're all welcome to discuss the public hearing.
Got it, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
So, are you going to present anything? Or, or do we just vote on the variance request as presented?
If we were to come up and present anything, and we do have the applicant here, as well as members of staff, the public hearing would need to be reopened. We're here to answer questions, but we're not going to make a presentation unless we're.
Okay. Do we have any, any counselors would like to ask questions on this variance? They are looking for a 50-foot variance? Okay. Hang on. I have to pull that up again. Counselor Popkin?
Yeah, while there's some, yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things while they're discussing. First of all, to the applicant, thank you for sticking around for this whole evening. It's been a long night. I appreciate it. I, I hope that my fellow council members will, will do this kind of revisiting of this justice, even though it's late. I, I had provided an amendment last time that failed, and so I'm looking to others to hear kind of what direction they want to go in. But I believe that the applicant, if I recall correctly, was requesting a variance up into the, the Greenway trail, the path there as the full, almost the full setback there, or the var, the full variance there, as part of their application. So, that's what their variance request was. Planning and zoning, I believe, the Councilman Rodriguez, correct me if I'm wrong, had recommend, had recommended a 50-foot compromise. I guess they were seeing that as. Yes, okay. So, I think, so our decision is whether to grant the variance or something else.
I'm going to move to not grant the variance. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Mayor Protim Hidalgo Ferring to not, to deny the variance request. I'm open for discussion. Counselor Popkin?
Yeah, I, I would just love to learn more about why, if you could share more on your thinking. Thank you.
Because it doesn't meet what the variance, or the 150-foot, I'm sorry, the 100-foot setback says as the, a need for it, that it would compromise their, I don't have the exact wording.
Mayor and council?
Can you help me with that?
I could help you with that.
Thank you.
Eugene May, city attorney. So, this is Longmont Municipal Code 1505-020. F5, reduce setbacks. Council, I'll excerpt it, may reduce a setback if it determines that the setbacks are greater than necessary to protect stream and creek corridors, riparian areas, and wetlands.
And the reason that I made it was because I do not think that it is excessive to protect that. And it is what we spent an awful lot of time on, making this ordinance. And there was a lot of input into it, a lot of discussion. So, Counselor Chris?
When we're considering a variance, you're, you know, we have rules, and so we're being asked to change our rules or ignore them. And so, why would we do that, is the question? I know planning and zoning suggested 50 feet. And after studying this colored depiction of the project area, I realized that maybe, and this is just a theory, that what they were thinking is that pink line, which is actually the floodplain, is about 50 feet setback from the red line. And there is a concern when you get over here to Track A that the proposed, I, I mean, it's awfully close, not only to the trail, but any building that would happen there. So, there's a concern also of flooding in that area. And the flooding, of course, is necessary for water foul and to protect, protect that waterway. So, that might have been what they were thinking when they said 50 feet. But definitely, the 100 feet is, is a large setback for the building that you want to do in that area. So. Now, interestingly enough, that the flood line intersects that, intersects that bike path, too. And I'm trying to think, I've bicycled over there. I'm trying to think, it drops off from there, in my recollection. But anyway, I, I don't see a prevalent reason to change the setback. Because they both, they both, I have concern with both the pink line and the, the original setback. I mean, the original setback is too far for building, but the pink line is too close to the building, so.
Mayor Peck, members of council, if I may, the applicant does have a slide prepared to further kind of explain what they're asking for. And they, they do have that prepared here tonight and are, are willing to come up and talk.
That's what I was wondering, if we had some kind of a, a presentation that we could look at. So, yes, please.
So, mayor and council, if the applicant presents, you should reopen the hearing so they can present additional evidence.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Popkin, seconded by Mayor Protim Hidalgo Ferring to reopen the public hearing on the Alta Vida riparian setbacks. What active motion?
Right there on the slide.
We, we have an active motion. I move that we deny the request. It was seconded.
Should we rescind it right now, or so we can continue?
I rescind the motion, then. So, we can continue and listen to Mr. Macy. Let's vote.
We ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for, for staying tonight. This will be very brief, because I know you've had a long evening. We've got a new proposal. That's what I want to present, very briefly. And I want to go to, is this the one Zach that shows it? Well, this is, this is one of them as well. Anyway, you'll see a solid green line on there. What we did was, we listened to what your concerns were, and we tried to correct them as best we can. We re-site planned tracks A and B. And due to the city's revocation of the minimum parking standards, while we got rid of some of the parking and moved the buildings up. So, we have all the buildings more than, at least 25 feet from the north edge of the bike path. And we're offering that as, as the riparian setback in the 25 feet. We've, we're also re-landscaping it with trees and with other types of things. And, and I guess the only other thing I want to make sure you know is, the bike path, the greenway, and, and this new 25-foot strip along it are very important to us, and we, we want to make it nice. I mean, our senior housing is, the seniors are out there walking all the time and exercising and that type of thing, and it's a real amenity to us. So, we're not trying to get rid of the whole area down there and, and the greenway. We want to beautify it, we want it safe, and, and we want to keep it. So, and I guess the only other thing I can say is, if, 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 if the riparian boundary is further. is further than the 25 feet, why, I think you're voting against senior housing, because it's going to cut off all of the senior housing. Either that or get a lawsuit, one or the other. So.
Let me just thank you for giving us the chance here. I'll go back and just review what a couple of these slides are. We thought it would be helpful for you. Like Dawn said, we listened to the feedback and wanted to come with a plan that we think is more representative of what the intent is, and we thought that would be more agreeable. And so this diagram shows, the, the green line is 25 feet from the north edge of the bike path. So we've moved everything north by 25 feet. And then the blue dashed line that's shown is the 50 feet from the riparian vegetation, which was what P&amp;Z recommended. And so this graphic here kind of shows you a good way to compare those. I think what this really shows is that the 25 feet from the bike path is a pretty good compromise, because the areas that are shaded in blue are extra width, that's beyond that 50 feet from the riparian. And the pink area is the area where the 50 feet from riparian exceeds the 25 feet from the bike path. And so just visually, if you look at those two things, you know, there's more blue than pink. And it seems like a reasonable compromise between, between those lines. And so this is the revised development plan, and this is a new concept. A, B, and C were all looked at, especially A and B, which you all mentioned, and we heard those concerns. And so this kind of shows where those lines butt up against the buildings. And it's really not much of an encroachment into even that pink area when you look at Track A and B. And so this is the stormwater plan, the revised design. And then we went ahead and, as Dawn said, we added more native plantings in that buffer area on, especially Track A and B. And this is a close-up that shows more trees, more pollinator gardens, more shrubs to buffer that habitat. And so these other ones, there's a few more plants here on Track C, and then the other parts largely unchanged. But, you know, the total here, we're asking for 25 feet from the north edge of the bike path. I want to remind us all of the SES worksheet and why that exists. And that came out of what's in the wildlife plan, and there's a reason for it. It's a really good tool. It's, it's the way that you can make a site-specific evaluation, because not all the project sites are created equal. What's within a setback varies, right? Some parts of town, there's a lot of beautiful native vegetation within that 100 feet, and then other parts of town, there's not. And then also, as it's rightly outlined in the wildlife plan, is that developers should be encouraged to do some of these mitigation measures, like how they manage stormwater, how they create plantings to enhance habitat, and we're doing those things. And so the SES worksheet, both staff scoring and our scoring showed a net positive, that we can make a win-win situation, and we really think that's what we're trying to do. And the staff agreed, you know, with, with our evaluation. And so we think that this is a good compromise, it can create a win-win situation. The revised planting plan would have 11 more trees, five more shrubs, two more pollinator gardens. And then, like I said, this shading shows that it's a good compromise between those scenarios. And so, like I said, we wanted to respond to your feedback. We wanted to create a win-win. We wanted to show that we can do environmentally friendly infill development, we can do habitat restoration and creation along this creek, and that it's going to meet the goals of the city doing this, environmentally friendly infill development and providing greatly needed senior housing. Like Dawn mentioned during our last meeting, their waiting list is like 70 or 80 people waiting to get in. And so we think this is a reasonable compromise, that it's not going against the code, it's following the code, because there's procedures in there for the SES worksheet. And I went into a lot of detail on the conditions, and I didn't go through all of the scoring and, on that worksheet, but there's 17 categories, and your staff worked really hard to develop that worksheet and protocol, and we followed it, and, and we think it's showing us that this can be done in a responsible and environmentally friendly way. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Council comments? Mayor Protem Hidalgo Ferring.
Yeah, I am very hesitant of encroaching on that 100-foot setback. I think about the, you know, the 150-foot and, and the analysis, the environmental studies, and everything that went behind why, why those setbacks were in place. If this were to go through, would there be any kind of environmental study to determine, you know, the viability of that kind of development on that space?
Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring, I'll, I'll quickly share that that study has already taken place.
Yeah, that's what I, okay. So there's, I mean, this is...
But what I'll also say is, we have our natural resources staff here who provided a recommendation of approval for the variance, and Jim may be able to speak more to kind of what happens now and why that rationale is.
What was the rationale, yeah. Yes, please. And I'm getting really tired, so.
Me too.
Mayor and Council, Jim Crick, ecosystem manager for the city. So, try not to repeat a lot of what everybody's already said, but going through the sustainability evaluation system has shown that with this development and their proposal, particularly with a lot of the landscaping, that it would be a net positive for this creek corridor environmentally. So with that support from the SES that myself and other staff participated in to do the evaluation, we feel that this project meets the requirements for variance, showing that it will provide a benefit for this corridor and not be a negative to it.
Any other comments? Councilor Crist.
I, I do have a question. Did you, in renegotiating this, did you lose, and this is for the developer, did you lose any, how much housing did you lose, or were you able to redesign it?
Due to the reduced parking requirements, we still have enough parking, but no, we didn't lose any units based upon that 25-foot. So, so I guess...
We lost six units.
Well, maybe six units. I didn't think we lost any, but maybe just a few. So our, so in effect, our, our request is for the variance not to go to the north end of the bike path, but 25 feet north of the bike path.
Yeah. How many units are you going to build there on the four tracks?
I don't know if I can answer that exactly. The, the independent living is a single building on Track D on the east side. That's 73 units. And there's about 100 units in all the other three tracks with the duplexes, fourplexes, and sixplexes.
Yeah. And, and you're going to do memory care also on that?
No.
No?
This will all be independent.
Okay.
It'll all be senior housing, all rental senior housing, but all independent.
Okay. Yeah, there is a big need for that, for sure.
Anything else? Thank you.
I don't see anyone else. Yes. Is there anybody in the public that would like to, Sherry Malloy?
Hi, Sherry Malloy, 1632 Sherman Way, and I too am tired, and I don't usually do well on the fly, but I'll take a stab at it. Just to repeat things I said, you know, now several hours ago, the land development code was, a lot of time and energy and heart went into that, a lot of public process. We have rules, we should follow the rules. And it's not your job to make accommodations so developers can build. The proposal is for very high-end rent homes, rentals, usually those, I mean, my mother-in-law was at Bellefour Louisville just to play, to pay to play for their cottages. I think it was either $50,000 or $100,000 just to start to pay the rent. So it's, um, these are not, you know, providing housing for low, low-income seniors. And the developers said that, you know, they, they wanted to provide the full range of housing. They already have independent living with 83 units, assisted living, and memory care. Again, this is not for skilled nursing, it would be for more independent, high-end units. And they are not asking for a 25, they're asking now for a 75-foot variance. They keep saying 25 feet north of the, of the bike, of the trail, of the sidewalk, but that's, that means a 75 percent, 75-foot. That's how I hear that. Well, that is what planning and zoning were. But it was, okay, well, I could be wrong on that. But one thing I, you know, I personally, as a member of the public who's been involved in this whole process, you know, in 2019 and before that, frankly, I feel like the developer's not really respectful of our code and all the public process that went into that, nor even respectful of this council to come up here and, and threaten a lawsuit. So I personally found that, you know, very troublesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the council? Sing? This topic. Yeah. Sorry. So I will close the public process, the public hearing on this issue, and I would like to have a motion. I'm still going to move then, since I don't see anyone stepping up to deny the variance. Seconded by Mayor Protem Hidalgo Ferring, Councilor Popkin.
Thanks, Mayor Peck. I appreciate you getting this going. I'm a little confused. And what I'm trying to piece together here is, this council has repeatedly said we want more senior housing. Now, that's not an expense of other goals or priorities. And, and what I understand the sustainability evaluation scoring to mean is that that's an indicator of whether there is a net benefit or net harm caused by the project from an environmental standpoint. And now, I, I think it's not accurate to say the applicant and staff were in full agreement, but they were in partial agreement, that they were in agreement that it was a net benefit overall, and staff had, I think, a plus five, and the applicant had a plus nine. Either way, it's a net benefit environmentally from, for most of the reasons why we are even caring about the riparian area. And in fact, that suggests that this is actually an, an overall net enhancement. And so I'm trying to understand why, like, I, I fully respect the concerns about setting a bad precedent. This feels like we're setting a good precedent. If we were to say like, hey, if you improve the environmental ability, capabilities of the ecosystem here, if you make it, enhance it with higher quality plants and, and absorption capabilities, make it better able to retain water, I don't have the exact score up in front of me now, but like, that feels like the exact reason why we should do this. And so I, I'm sensitive, I'm absolutely sensitive to the reasons why we would want to reject something that's going to be a net harm to our ecosystem, absolutely. That's why the riparian setback was set up. But fortunately, thanks to many dedicated folks well before me, we actually have the sustainability evaluation scoring system. And as a result of that, we know like, hey, is this going to help improve the ecosystem that we care about, the riparian corridor that we care about? If, if we put faith into the, if we, if we trust the process that was set up there, then the outcome from that is, or the, the result of that is that this is a net benefit. And so I'm just very curious about the precedent that's, that this sets, actually, if we deny this, to say, no, we're rejecting something that's better according to our metric system that we set up, not the applicant's metric system, our metric system. And so I'm, I'm very concerned about that principle. And part of the reason why I had proposed an amendment in August when this first came up, was that there were some areas where they didn't score as highly. And so I thought, hey, right now, we're dealing with like an arbitrary line. Actually, to the applicant's credit, what they've proposed here is a meaningful improvement in that it is enhancing, I don't, I don't think we redid the SES, but it's actually adding more trees, it's adding more plants to create a better natural sponge for that area. Now, if we want to, like, and so if, if we don't think that goes far enough, I'd still bring up my past amendment of saying, hey, let's add more green infrastructure to the other areas too, because that helps with heat mitigation, it helps the stormwater retention, and doesn't just add like a few more trees, it does some more for the pervious, the impervious areas. But if council's not open to that right now, I still think this is a net benefit. Our scoring system suggests so. And like, I, I don't want to go, I, I certainly don't want to just accept a variance because someone's asking for it. That's not a good reason to do it. I fully agree with that. But if this is a net benefit overall to our community, to this ecosystem, to our, our senior housing populate, like, demand, and to this corridor, which this suggests it is, I, I'm curious why we're setting a bad precedent by denying it.
Councilor Crist. So my original question was, if we're going to grant a variance, we need to have a reason to do it. And I'm just thinking it over. I tend to agree with you, Councilor Popkin, that adding more vegetation, I guess you would say, on the north side of that trail is a, is a big benefit. And I think it also protects that trail and protects the new development. I'm actually coming around to, to where I would grant the variance for like a 50-foot setback, but as they suggested, a 25-foot from the trail, which is almost exactly the 50-foot setback. So if you'd like to make a motion, I would support it.
We already have one on the table.
Ah, well. Yes. So if you would want to make a motion in favor of, I would...
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, let's vote. So that fails with five to two with myself and, oh, I am tired, Mayor, Mayor Protem Hidalgo Ferring for, and the rest of council against. So you have your variance. Darn it.
Scenario?
No.
Okay, so I move acceptance of the variance of 25 feet from the north side of the trail, which is almost exactly the 50-foot setback planning and zoning had asked for.
It's been moved by Councilor Crist, seconded by Matthew Popkin to grant the variance for...
Thank you, Councilmember Crist. I wanted to ask if you'd be open to adding in the amendment that I had suggested last time as a friendly amendment, and I, because I think the applicant was receptive to it, and I think it also, it further enhances the project, and I can restate it if that's helpful. I believe it was to add additional green infrastructure at their choosing, looking, looking, Dawn, do you have? I believe it was add additional green infrastructure to another 25% of their pervious, their impervious surfaces. That could be in roof, it could be parking lot, however they want to make that further enhance the goals. I, I can pull up those, but if you're receptive to the spirit of that, I can pull up the specifics.
And this is to mitigate the heat?
To mitigate heat island effect and to further capture stormwater runoff, to further enhance the environmental benefits and the environmental... enhance the environmental benefits and the environmental protection of the riparian area. Like, that is what that does.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a very friendly amendment. I accept.
Can you weigh in on that, please, City Attorney?
Mayor and council, I can. I did have a different question. I'm thinking about how to document the variance.
I know.
And maybe I can look over to Zach. Like, we would just take the graphic of what the applicant has prepared. How do we know where the line is? And if the sidewalk moves, what happens? I'm just trying to figure out how we enforce, how we know where the variance line is.
Well, it's real confusing on the P and Z, because that 50-foot's from the canopy. And the leaves fall, the canopy changes, and it goes all over the place. That's why we chose the bike path, because it's not going to move.
There's legal, recorded easement.
With the city.
Yeah, with the city where the white path is.
So, it's surveyable, so.
The line in our graphic was offset from the easement line in our can, so it should be...
Is that going to work for you guys?
I believe so, Grand Pillon Planning and Development Services Director. Since we do have an exhibit as part of even the prior submittal, we do have an established northern boundary of the existing sidewalk that we can then establish that 25 feet from, as it exists today.
Okay. I just wasn't quite following all their graphics. In terms of Councilmember Popkin's motion, I think conditions are permissible where there's nexus in proportionality to the purpose of the variance. And here, it seems like if we're trying to improve habitat, and it doesn't seem overly onerous, that it would be a viable, permissible condition.
Yeah, I found the language that I'd proposed before, so I can just read that verbatim, if that's, if Councilmember Christ is receptive. Yeah. So, I guess if you accept this, it would be a motion to conditionally approve the updated variance request here with an additional 25 percent of green infrastructure beyond what's currently proposed to further mitigate heat island effects and stormwater runoff.
Do they get credit for the additions that they made?
No, this is beyond what they, like, this is 25 percent beyond what is currently proposed in the updated proposal.
And you're thinking this is not so much a buffer between the sidewalk or the trail, but maybe throughout the development to mitigate heat?
This, this is throughout, looking at, yes, it gives them the flexibility to work with the, the site plan that they have, whether it's to use, whether, if they wanted to stretch further away from the riparian setback, that would count. But they could also make the parking lots pervious to reduce water runoff. They can make, they can add green roofs on. There are multiple different tactics and strategies and technologies that they could apply. It gives them the flexibility to do that while still actually enhancing beyond what they've already enhanced. So, I think it achieves the spirit of, not only the spirit of the variance, but it actually, I think, enhances the score probably of their sustainability evaluation score and some of the parameters, because those were some of the areas that I think were, were less strong there, even though it was an overall net benefit.
Okay. And does that seem reasonable to the applicant? Okay. Then, yes, I accept it.
Okay. So, the motion is to approve continuation of the residence at Alta Vita Riparian setback variance 25 feet from north side of trail as requested, with the condition that the additional 25 percent green infrastructure, then what is...
Beyond what's...
Then is proposed to mitigate heat island effects and reduce water runoff. Let's vote.
Oh, I'm in the wrong meeting. Sorry. I'm a yay on that.
So, that passes unanimously. Thank you, and good night. It's nighttime. So, now we are at council, mayor and council, no, I'm sorry, final public invited to be heard. Is there anybody in the public? Come on down. You waited long enough.
Paul Minchin, 1400 Terra Rosa. I am a Longmont resident. And I wanted to speak about the airport. I know you passed it, but I may not be able to be here next time, so I wanted to make a few points.
Okay.
I did feel that this was a crammed issue, because I was not prepared to come tonight. That's why I couldn't sign up at 7:00 PM. Because this got moved, I know, because of your, your situation and not being able to quorum, but that's what the situation is. I did want to make some points about the airport. There are a number of charities that have actually have operations that have happened there you may not be aware of. Pilots in paws, pilots fly pets that have been given up in shelters that might be high kill areas. Pilots take those pets, fly them to other areas where they can be adopted and not killed. That's one charity. Another charity is called Wings of Hope. They help get people from one place to the other place in the country. They also help move doctors around the world, pilots at the Longmont Airport sort of port that. Another charity is called Lighthawk. They help in environmental areas. They fly people around to do surveys, to look at things that might be happening illegally west of, west of Longmont. And that's a charity that operates out of the airport. These are not businesses. They rely on the airport infrastructure. One of the people in favor of these mentioned Heber City in Utah and where Sundance is. But as we've mentioned, Sundance moved out of there. And one of the reasons why they cited that was because of the infrastructure limitations of Sundance. So, the last thing was the two charts, there were two charts presented in the presentation. One was about the four cities that have fees. All of them did not charge a fee for aircraft under 10,000 pounds, I believe. There was one that was 10,000, and all the rest were 12,500. None of them had a flat fee. You've suggested as one option, a flat fee. If you took the option that the other four cities have, you're only going to get like $14,000. There was a suggestion that, oh, we should look at these other places. And when they put in fees, did that decrease use of the airport? Those four don't apply, because they didn't put in a flat fee. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Scott?
My apologies, Mayor, for extending this. Mayor, members of council, Scottsore, 229 Grant Street. Budget policy, airport fees. The city of Longmont will establish fees and charges at the municipal airport in accordance with regulations, guidelines, and grant assurances of the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA. And with the consideration given to the area's prevailing rates, fees and charges will be reviewed annually to determine whether all operating expenditures are recovered. I know everybody's saying we, we need to figure out a different way, and we can do, you know, more fuel flowage. We get more planes in here, we'll get more fuel, fuel tax refund according to the airport fund. In 2024, the entire year was $8,137. Flow, fuel flowage was $8,177. You could double that, and you're still not going to make a dent in anything. For the airport to have the ability to, for the city council to have the ability to do landing fees, no matter what the rate is and who's exempt or what have you, to do exemptions is premature. You need to capture, see what the revenue stream is, and then you can, you can give discounts after you actually see what your actual revenue stream is. To give discounts when everybody's threatening to boycott and do all this stuff is irresponsible. Adopt it so that you guys can actually, you actually have a tool in order to help with the budget, get the administrative transfer fee fully funded, or fully funding the general fund. That's it. Have a great night.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to close. Final call, public invited to be heard. City and council remarks? Okay. Mayor Protim?
Sorry. Okay, sorry. With SNAP benefits coming to an end, I am very concerned about, you know, just our low-income and people who are heavily dependent on, on food, you know, just food security, food support. I did have a conversation with Sandy Cedar earlier about having an opportunity, you know, just looking into maybe putting on the back of receipts on, you know, just doing something with the grocery stores, how on the backside, they have coupons or advertisement, to have the city, we have, if they qualify for SNAP, they can qualify for a food, grocery rebate. So, like our cares program. So, they would automatically apply for, qualify for cares. So, having something on the back of receipts is, is something that I'm kind of interested in looking at, as well as if there are nonprofits, you know, just putting together an itemized list of all the food banks and, you know, from the Our Center, Food Rescue, Colorado Friendship, that, that people can access quickly, and maybe highlighting the ones that have less red tape to access those foods, because, you know, it's, it's a concern to me. The other thing, and thank you, Councilmember Popkin, for forwarding the one email about the lights. There's a lot of emails, and I went to look in my junk box. I have like over 800 emails that are resident emails that are in my junk box. And they're, they're ones that are directly, that are emailed, but they're directly to me. They're not through the portal. So, check, check your, check your junk boxes, guys. So, and that's, yeah, okay, that's, that's all I have. And I don't know if Sandy, if you wanted to weigh in on the cares, or maybe doing more advertising on that piece.
I don't think she wants to weigh in on anything.
I just wanted to mention, I keep forgetting to mention, that I'm going to go to NLC in November on the 18th.
Yeah.
Good. Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Well, to piggyback on Mayor Protim Hidalgo Ferring's point of view, if you're, if there's people out there in the community that really feel like they want to give, the best thing you can give is dollars, because then the organizations can actually use them for a variety of things. When you're trying to say, hey, I'm going to bring in these cans, sometimes it takes a lot of manpower to go and look to see if something has expired, something has been recalled, or something is close to being expired. It's much, much more effective for the community to receive those dollars if you're trying to be generous than to try to bring in something that might not be, might create more work than necessary. So, for folks that are trying to, to be supportive, you know, the dollars are the, are the thing. Second thing is, after going to the golf场last night, and as we go into the winter months, I didn't know this, but when there's frost on the ground, and people go and walk on the golf course, it actually kills the grass. So, they say, you're welcome to be there before hours and after hours, but stay off the grass and stay on the cart trails, because it, that frost is very dangerous. And you can see exactly step per step of the individual and their pets, and so on and so forth, so forth. It's, it's a cost to the city when we have to then go back in and try to fix those things. So, just remind people of that as, as we move into the winter months.
Okay. Thank you. City manager, remarks?
No comments, Mayor, council.
City Attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
I move that we adjourn. We are adjourned. I'm not asking for a vote. We're out of here.